I am your guide, the invisible liberty and justice for all.
We will call the Exeter Town Council's regular meeting on Monday, December 4th, 2023. Order will impart these take.
Ian Patterson, Mike O'Veigh.
Here.
Diane Allen.
Here.
Francesca.
Here.
Kalos.
Here.
Number three, acknowledgements and announcements. Uh, A, county next to the holiday closures. Tuesday, December 5th, employee appreciation luncheon. The town hall, all town offices will be closed 12 to 1 o'clock. Thursday, December 21st, employee retirement party, 12 to 1 o'clock. All town offices will be closed. Friday, December 22nd, 2023, all town offices will be closed all day. That's Christmas Eve, uh, Christmas Eve holiday for the collective party units. Uh, Monday, December 25th, closed all day, Christmas Day. Friday, December 29th, 2023, town offices will be open for half a day, New Year's Eve. Monday, January 1st, 2024, all day, New Year's, New Year's Day.
And if we go on one more?
Yeah.
Uh, a few days ago, our librarian asked if the city was sorry to make an exit notice in print. But he asked if I would say something. The library is hosting a holiday party, uh, this Thursday, 5 to 7 in the afternoon. So the public is invited to the Exeter Public Library.
Number four, motion to approve the agenda order.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, approval of the consent and, uh, you do have nothing from Reynolds?
No.
Uh, communications, Mike, do you have any?
Negative.
Diane?
Nope.
Cal?
Only those will be addressing shortly.
Well, that's a first.
Cal, not a lot on it.
We're off to a good start.
There weren't that many, one thing, that's good.
Let's see, do you think we got a little geek? A little minutes. All in favor of consent and agenda?
That's a motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, number six, vacancies and appointments. A, personnel board?
Nope, sorry.
Conservation commission, continue to pose. Uh, item B, resignations, we have none. Item C, appointments. Exeter Rural Land Preservation Trust Committee member to serve four-year term beginning date of appointment. Number two, Exeter Rural Land Preservation Trust Committee member to serve unexpired term ending April 6th, 2024. Number three, Wood Pocketuck Wild and Scenic River Stewardship Council alternate member.
We have one.
We have one.
Communication number one.
Yeah.
I move for discussion. I move to appoint Sharon McLean as a, as a full candidate.
Here, you had it last month.
I have motion to.
Create a motion, somebody give a second.
Second, thank you.
Just a comment, uh, you've seen, it's very impressive. She's very, I met her, talked with her, and she's very interested in being involved in the future. Later, what she's done, she's good. So that's why I'm happy to nominate her.
Motion to adjourn, please. For the profession, all in favor?
Aye.
Number four, board canvassings, alternate member to serve unexpired term ending May 3rd, 2027. Economic Development Task Force member.
Number four, I was gonna say, didn't we have one of those too?
We did, we, we have a letter of interest from Nancy Roth. Nancy, Nancy Roth, who was here.
That's an administrator.
For our way to. You recall Nancy Roth was here last month, speaking about, uh, Chamber of Commerce. And now we have a letter of interest from her that she'd like to sit with the Economic Development Task Force. So I'll move to appoint her to the task force.
Second.
We have a discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Number six, public work worker. We're gonna, we're gonna hold off on that?
Yeah, was any of us scheduled discussing something with Rob on that? We have some questions.
Um, are you, are you ready for number seven, a transfer station attendant?
Um, I, I, on this, as well, I have interested parties. I just haven't been able to have time to schedule interviews.
Okay, so we'll continue that till next month?
Yes, please.
Expiring terms, Ben?
This is very encouraging. Don't anybody, everybody study.
Okay, number seven, public hearings. Proposed amendments to Exeter Code of Ordinances due to legislative changes to Rhode Island General Law 45-24-46.1, effective January 1, 2024. Question, do I have to read all of that?
Yes.
Okay.
For everybody to the agenda.
That's, I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
You're up, Bill.
Thank you, Mr. President. My name is Bill DeGrasse Callan, town planner, honorable members of the town council. Uh, before you, you should have had a memorandum. Uh, I don't know exactly how many pages were, if there were, but there was, it was dated October 29th, 2023. And the subject was recommendation to the Exeter Town Council and ordinance amendment to the Exeter zoning ordinance. Apply with the recent housing zoning laws passed by the legislature that will affect, uh, take effect in January 1st, 2024. I'm here with Karen Ellsworth, who is our, our co-consonant that absolutely did a heroic job trying to get this information to this board before the January 1st deadline. Uh, it was, it was ironic that today I received a survey back, um, from the Planners Association about how many communities are, will actually be ready for January. And there's not a lot of them, like 50% of the communities will be ready by January 1. The survey was really unique too, because it really took a snapshot of those communities and the issues that they had. A lot of it was not enough time, inconsistencies between the legislation, incongruity with other legislation that wasn't even touched, and a whole post of other things. Nevertheless, our community is here now, and we're here tonight to put us over the, the line for January 1. So in your package, you will have each and every section. What I plan to do is go through each and every section. I'm going to introduce four particular amendments that are in yellow in the packages that you have and also available for the public. But just so everyone knows, it's the original set of draft recommendations or amendments to the zoning ordinance. The yellow is the four particular variances that are amendments to those amendments. And the third is just a follow-on, a brief presentation, which is just a summary of what we'll do today. And without further ado, we're gonna go to, um, section, Article One, Administrative Procedures, Section 1.2, Definitions. And if we can pull that up, this is the first section that is subject to a proposed amendment. The proposed amendment, which is referred to as Article One, Section 1.2, Definitions, it's the revision is 112823, that's the yellow package. So the yellow packet can be looked at, the original package, so that y'all can understand what we're looking at. The highlighted differences between the two revisions is one that comes from the planning board recommendation. So on November 28th, 2023, the Exeter Town Council received a memorandum from the planning board. And they had an advisory opinion to, uh, the honorable town council to amend some of the definitions that were included. They included agricultural land, conservation development, add cluster, add public water. And then they discussed later on, we'll get to another section about adding performance and development standards that were once found in the development plan review, but is no longer going to be within the development plan review because we have stricken that, uh, and cross that over to the minor and major land development project. We'll deal with it at another date. What this is, is basically a summary of what the changes were to Section 1.2. So obviously, we have the elimination of fractual numbers, which was always above a roof. Uh, as we put zoning ordinances together from probably 1992 all the way up, or even maybe before 82, we end up getting all this fractured numbering, that's all been eliminated and renumbered. The draft has to ensure consistency and clarity, limiting areas, redundancy, fluctuations, words that were only found once, but don't have any corollary meaning with any other part of, uh, the code ordinances. For instance, I think is a great example, wetland coastal, um, at least for coastal, coastal wetlands aren't something that we have in Exeter. We might have in five years or so. Eliminate things like that. Uh, consolidating regulations of portable solar energy. Again, because this ordinance was actually piecemeal over a period of time, uh, regulations can kind of take its form in, in many different sections, very confusing to read. So there was a consolidation of solar, uh, solar energy fields, uh, facilities. You have the definition, what kind they are, two, one, two, three. Um, outward, outbowed and unnecessary verbiage was changed. But the big thing here is development plan review is no longer included in the zoning ordinances. One of the new statutes was bring the development plan review from the zoning into the land development. Within the land development, the DPR looks mainly like the minor and major land development in a new classification, except that the DPR now is limited to four or five elements that appear to be more for urban communities than someone like Exeter, which is a rural community. And I personally thought it was, um, very, it kind of duplicated. The process is, is not much different between the minor and major land development and the former development plan review. So you'll see throughout these documents, because it doesn't hold just in one section, it goes in many different sections, that you'll see this, um, the development plan review being stricken in many different sections. Accessory dwelling unit was cleaned up, that was a 2022 legislature, uh, legislature act. Today, there's a Senate bill and a House bill that could change it even more. Uh, we can discuss that at a further date if you want to, but there's a competing Senate and, and a House bill that will do more to the accessory dwelling. Land unsuitable for development, so the definitions have changed over a period of time and, and we sought to, um, um, update that to the latest statute that was, uh, that was consistent with state law. Same thing with building height. Lot frontage is interesting, uh, zoning ordinance, land development, uh, definitions identify streets as public, but Section 5.14 subdivision regula's permit private streets. Both definitions, uh, have to be amended. It was, because you do have a private street and you have a public street, like a cluster, for instance, I mean, a conservation subdivision would have a private street. So these are definitional changes for consistency. Plan districts, again, um, appears to be a definition of zoning districts. I picked up on this the first day I was here, it's, it's a mess. So plan district is actually a zoning district, but it's also used as a type of code like that term over and over. And they kind of confused the two. We're looking in the Lad Center project that we, we're working with the state on, a hundred thousand to rectify that. Maybe even get rid of plan district altogether, because it was only like four areas in town, three of which we have no idea why they were zoned plan district. The other one is Lad Center. So we may go to like an institutional zone there that's governed by a master plan. So the other project I'm working on, it with the state, is to finally do a master plan for Lad Center so that the town understands the process and that maybe we can get 10% of affordable or, or senior housing in there since it does have community well system. So anyway, that plan district needed, um, some cleaning up. Uh, read app, I guess there's a definition there, but you know, it was, it was kind of just sitting there all, all alone. You don't really know what the intent of that, you can only guess. So that term, again, was eliminated, recreational vehicle. Uh, there were two different definitions, recreational vehicle in the general law and the current definition. Uh, both are inconsistent with state statute. Uh, so, so that's it in a nutshell for Article One, Section 1.2, Definitions. Is there any questions, um, on the amended version of it or the original version? And, um, any suggested changes? If not, what I can do is just do one section at a time, so we're not passing all over.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's Article One. The next article is Article One, Section 1.3. And again, this from the last one we, um, oh yeah, one, one, one point on that, I'm sorry. On the definitions, the planning board had asked, and the yellow version includes definition of public water supply, a definition, a new definition of conservation development, a definition of cluster, which is in state law, what a cluster is. Conservation development is essentially a type of cluster. And those are the amendments that they brought forth, and that is added as definition within that yellow amendment that we're asking you to vote. Okay, just so you picture, we have revision 112823. So if you do vote in affirmative, I would ask that it be on revision 112823.
Should we vote on these one at a time or?
Well, you can have a public hearing, so.
Okay, yeah, the public side.
Unless you want to bring up the public one at a time.
For each element, no.
Definitely get your jam.
Okay, next one, Article One, Section 1.3. In this, there is no amendment, um, and as we walk through it, this is the new state law that addresses, uh, both non, uh, non-conforming development. Um, there were things, changes, uh, changes to avoid redundancy, um, to ensure that the information was not repeated, um, especially if it was not repeated incorrectly, or I should say with inconsistencies. Article three now has a new subsection that replaces the previously redundant sections. Uh, the naming legislation has now been updated to allow building or on non-conforming lots. This sectionally formally addressed non-conforming lots will be moved to Article three. What had happened was Article One, Section 1.3, and Article three, both had information on how we address in non-conforming development, how the town addresses. I don't know why, we still don't, Karen probably, you know, she had a better understanding than I.
I couldn't figure it out either. It was a mystery.
It was a mystery, but it was really due.
I got a question right on that one.
Yeah.
That restricts the merger of lots. So these lots, I know, there was one until like years ago that was out here, where the people had bought a lot, built a house, raised their kids, and they had bought a lot next door that you can't, uh, afford it. And when they wanted to give it to one of the kids, they could build on it, now they can't?
That's a very good question. The problem with the, the amendments to the enabling legislation is that it doesn't make it clear when this new rule on mergers is supposed to start.
If they had had it in two different names, they could have built on it, but because it was the same, and this happens in all the other.
Yes, yes.
So that's still a gray area?
Yes, it, well, I think it is because the legislation didn't make it clear whether it's retroactive or not. Does it apply to any lot that ever merged but shouldn't have merged under the law today? Or does it just apply going forward? I don't know what the answer is.
The correct way that most towns used to approach it was when we had a merger clause, we would say as of June 20th, 1988, the gate circuit, that you can't check up orders, what they were doing. And you, you can't do it. In this case, the legislation that I, like, there was no, if I did it the day before, if I did it December 31st, and I had merged these lots in January 1st, and I didn't have to merge them, do I have any recourse?
Because I know they still get separate tax bills, if you ever know that, uh, before.
Right, but this is more important in that it's going kind of, kind of turning back the clock to say you can't require mergers of substandard lots if you meet this criteria. If all the area, surrounding areas proportionate surrounding area, if you're proportionately, uh, buildable within that area. So basically, you're unmerging a lot of these locked lots that have been locked since the eighties. I think that's pretty substantial, but in terms of, um, we can't do anything about how the law is written, but what we did do is we moved everything to one section, because it shouldn't be in Section 1.3. Moved it into Article three, um, Section 3.5.5.4 to make it a lot easier. And we've talked about this, the amendment requires compliance with the 2023 legislation which prohibits the merging of non-conforming lots. If an area is at least, lodges half the lots within a 200-foot, uh, 200 whether the non-conforming, uh, lots. So you do a, you do 200 feet, and if those lots are similar and conform, at least 51% of them, then you can build to that standard, which is a big, this is one of the largest, I think, developments that I see in terms of, of land use, there's several other ones, but this one actually opens more lots into development. And usually, pre-existing lot areas like you would have before you got zoning, a smaller lodge, smaller lots. Well, lots that may have an area but didn't have frontage. All kind of open, all opens those up for development. That's a, that's a big one. Okay, do we have anything on the cleanup of 1.3? We're gonna actually get more into it when we go to Section three, because that's where a lot of this stuff resides. Uh, but that's it for one, Section 1.3, under Article one. Three more questions, we're gonna move on to Article one, Section 1.4, entitled Special Provisions. The table has been updated to display only dimensional regulations that are subject to modification. Some of the, uh, dimensional regulations are not subject to modification, so by culling those out, it just makes it a lot easier to interpret what is subject to that 15% massive modification. Um, and I think that is a very good, very important upgrade. So the differences in definition and questions of a legal authority or request of pre-application conference, as stated in Article one, Section 1.4.1. C has been rectified. Again, throughout this, there's been, there's been numerous cases where the, um, the definition for the provision brings up more problems than, than it solves. And, and this is an attempt to try to, you know, rectify, uh, the differences in the definition and questions of legal authority. So, um, the pre-application conference basically says that I can call it, or, you know, Joe can call it, Tom can call it. I think this is a question of the legal authority that's only in fact to, uh, to ask for, you know, a pre-application conference, or for that matter, the planning board, or, or me, like, we just, you know, willy-nilly say, I want a pre-application conference. So there was some question on whether that was to be legal, so I think we clean that up. Um, I don't know how that statute was in there, but it was in there for a while. Uh, the next section is the comprehensive permit, section 4D is updated to comply with the new state statute. This is pretty important, comprehensive, uh, permit section, um, you know, allows kind of a uniform, speedy, uh, review of a comment, a comp permit that has a land use element that meets a local housing plan, especially for low moderate, doesn't have to be, but most cases it's for low moderate. So the changes in that permit process, without getting into it, it should make it easier. The biggest one is that the appeal board is, is now right to Superior Court. An understanding Superior Court will have a calendar, and it will be, you know, dealing with things like that as opposed to SHAB, which was the other appeals, um, board for comprehensive permits. And other process, um, elements that are kind of in the weeds. Uh, greenhouses, they were included and renumbered. Uh, as we know, that greenhouses came in, you know, only two, three days of running around trying to stick numbers into special provisions. So this is a great time to client, clean up the definitions, put them all in one place, put the design performance standards, and so everything is kind of in one place now, which is a fantastic thing. Anytime we open a zoning ordinance or land development, it's always good that we take the opportunity to make things, uh, easier to, um, understand for the public and, and quite frankly, for elected officials, myself, in terms of going to one-stop shopping and, on assessing where greenhouses located, if they're located, with the design and performance standards conference. So obvious, um, this one, um, is the big one. So on page 31, now we have required, uh, under Special Provisions 4E, which is on page 31, unified development review. The previous law had that as optional for community, it's no longer optional. But all communities must have unified development review. And what does that do? Well, it has a petition that may want a special use permit as part of the development or dimensional variance. It allows them only to, to go to the planning board and ask for relief for that and the special use permit or, and/or a special use permit and the major and minor land development. So that unified development review, the enabling legislature, the enabling verbiage had to sit somewhere, and it's sitting right now in the Special Provisions Unified Development Review. So that gives, kind of bestows the power onto the planning board and, quite frankly, takes away from zoning. So the planning board's gonna get a lot of that unified application, and it's gonna come through the planning office to get that done. So that's, that's really the major changes there, and that's quite significant to see because, you know, brings, um, those developments right down to the planning board level and staff. Any questions on Section 1.4, entitled Special Provisions? Okay, the next article is Article one, it's Section 1.5. And it's on the, the adoption of what they call administrative procedures. And it's, the application notice and adoption of amendment requirements have all been revised to comply with the state statute. So the state statute is changing in a, in a few ways. And I think for me, from a planist's point of view, the state statute now establishes an 18-month deadline for municipality to bring its zoning map in compliance with future name and status, except for, so if, say we did a zone change and, or we did a map change, uh, we have to make sure that the comprehensive plan and that map change, uh, change are consistent within 18 months. So that has to get done. Many times you'd have a zone change, and it would be never reconciled against the comp plan or vice versa. The comp plan would change, change zoning in an area, but the actual zoning was never changed. I'll give you an example, real example of which may face a town. If the town looks at changing the lad center to institutional zoning, having its own set of criteria driven by the master plan, both the comprehensive plan would have to call for that, and the zoning would have to rec, be rectified to change institutional within that 18-month period. So that is kind of holding, uh, the town's feet to the fire to make sure that these, that these, uh, the plan and zoning is consistent. And this, this changes, again, a lot of these changes affect me. Uh, you know, the administrative board, because it has so-and-so days, 15 days to do this, 35 days to do that, that all changes, and none of them for the better for me. Most of them have, have, it's been reduced in the amount of time it takes me to receive, to get application in, to certify development and post it, um, so that's also in this section.
And remember, he's a part-time.
And a part-time.
He's supposed to be.
Yes, he's supposed to be part-time.
He's paid part-time.
Yes.
He's semi-retired.
Yes.
Supposed to be.
Uh, there's different changes, maybe you can, I'm, I know I'm missing the public hearing, the, wasn't there a notification change?
There was, it was a really big one. Um, there's an additional requirement, you have to post, um, notice of a public hearing in the town clerk's office and at least one other municipal building. There's a problem if you only have one municipal building, but people who wrote this, you know, they live in Providence, and they don't, they have a lot of municipal buildings up there.
Right, right.
And, um, and, and post it on the homepage of your website, you have to do that.
That was the key, the website's gonna get a lot of traffic, and this will be like, in some cases, 14 days. So what it does, it sets me out, like, I have to think of that criteria before I actually set an agenda or set everything else, because that 14 days kind of ride, overrides anything else. If I get it in, you know, less than 14 days, then I can't be on that agenda. That actually is in a few places within the new legislation, is gonna be problematic.
It's for all public hearings, basically.
All public hearings, right.
Yeah, amendments to the zoning ordinance, amendments to the subdivision regulations, variances, special use permits. Although they did forget to put special use permits in with the variances.
And, and what we're doing is we set a schedule, this is for the planning board for January 2024. And you'll see, and I don't want the public to get upset, but the out, the deadlines end up having to get pushed all the way out. Because say a deadline for major or minor land development comes in, I still have to certify complete. So there's dates before that that I have to certify complete. Once I certify complete, then I can look at the agenda, but then I have to back up the agenda up to the 14 days on the website. Right, so, so it's, so you'll see this next upcoming year, your deadlines are going to be for applications to anything, way out. It's gonna be like three, four weeks out, if not more, before the hearings. Which may upset some of the public, and I can't say that I blame them, but it's directly as a result of this. 14 days is a lot, I mean, you can post something on the website and still be viable within a week because there's a bunch of other posting going on, it's not just the website.
Bill, a quick question. In the circle of planners, I know you and I have spoken of this, they obviously aren't the only planner that has concerns about how to administer what they've handed, they've handed to you and others. Do you, do you think there's, are there any initiatives, do you think, that may be taken to try to, try to mitigate some of these procedural issues?
I think it's a great question, I think they're not even close to that. But what they're doing now is they're taking surveys of what they don't have. And there's a clear distinction here. Departments that are rural, that have one or two people or a half planner are crushed. Departments that are greater and larger, for instance, and near urban communities, urbans, they're taking it with stride. They got, they got five, six, 10 people that they can kind of assign this to. And so what you're seeing is, you know, a lot of calls for assistance, but there's, there's not much, you know, they're giving other than municipal technical assistance through a rural housing maybe. But it's not about hiring someone to do something at a locality. And to me, for rural communities, they could easily establish populations under X, could have some funding to bring someone out. Even a consultant to come in to help the town. Nothing like that is being discussed right now.
That's a serious problem in all the small towns.
I'm sure it is.
Yeah.
Yeah, a real serious problem because the failure to act ends up being approvals. And that, I think, is what you may see. When one falls through the crack because it's a 31st day and you had 30 days and it gets approved, that's when, you know, people really say, whoa, what do we do here? And it's under the idea that, you know, we want to speed up development and get housing. I don't know that the end's justified the means. I think, I think you're gonna see a lot of bad planning. In my humble opinion, being a planner for some 40 years, this has gone backwards to pre-1996-ish. Kind of when I first started as a planner, you could walk into the clerk's office and you could just record frontage plots. Maybe it's going too far the other way, but I don't know that this is the happy medium that they're gonna slap. And I think there's gonna be the law of unintended consequences. Well, first law of unintended consequences was many towns repealing inclusionary zoning. It was actually a good piece of legislation that they monkeyed around with and at least, you know, half the community or 40% of the communities may be considering getting rid of it, especially the rural communities. Because one, it doesn't get to the goal it says it's gonna get, which is increased low, moderate income housing. And it's just a building development tool. It basically decreases density and allows more development. But it doesn't mean all the development is going to low, mild, just more development. We're gonna get to that section, but.
If I could add too, the other problem with, with having all of these applications approved administratively is transparency.
Yes.
Now, everything that goes to the planning board is public. A lot of the applications that now go to the planning board will not go to the planning board. They'll be approved by the administrative officer with no advertising, no public hearing, no nothing.
And let me tell you from someone that, that, you know, I live in West Grant, I don't live here. The last thing I want to do as a planner is to make decisions from a board that was elected by the town council or appointed or whatever it was. That is the whole positioning here of a planning board and a zoning board. They took discretion basically away from the zoning board with special use permits. They've taken the planning board for minor lot subdivisions away and gave it to an administrative officer. Depends what administrative officer you have. And, and a point's well taken, it's like, what kind of transparency? When we come in for a minor, it's all planning board here and public comes out and they have a look at the plans and discuss this. They're gonna come to my office while I'm stamping a plan for nine lots? Nine lots, think about it, nine lots through my department, on the existing street, approved, right? We used to have a joke back in the day was, you knew the developers with the approved stamp. And that's all they would have is that stamp, so. And a lot of things can happen that are probably not consistent with the goals of the community, a community, I should say. But we will save. So we're done with 1.5, we can go on to 1.6, which is Article 1.16, Administration. Again, this has been updated to reflect 22 changes in appointments and duties of the zoning board. So as you well know, remember 22, they changed how, how many zoning board members it took to have a quorum. So this, this actually changed and rectified our current ordinance with, with the actual laws that are in place. And that took place in 2014, 2017, so quite a while. This happens sometimes, the ordinance doesn't reflect the actual statutes that are on the book. It's interesting because 45, you know, 23, without a general law, not only requires four zoning board members per quorum instead of five. You know, most of my life it was five, so, you know, I think we all remember that. So this just kind of make sure that our code, code ordinances are, conform with state law. So I can, Karen found this and poodles for her. Like, I can't tell you how impressed I am with the amount of knowledge Karen has and the things she finds. But she found that the, there was no expiration date for one of the appointments to the zoning board. So it could lead to, instead of flip-flop or rotating appointments, it could just lead to these five-year appointments. I don't know if you want to speak to it, but basically what we did is we put a deadline on it, so it's a date cert. At the end of June 30th.
It's from the charter, actually.
Yeah, from the charter.
Yeah.
So it goes deep into the charter.
The charter and the ordinance didn't match.
They didn't match all these years, so. So there may have been appointments to the zoning board that kind of didn't meet the intent that was intended. So now at least we have a debt, an expiration date on June 30th, which we can say the alternate board members, five-year terms instead of the current two-year term. So that'll get it back to within the tax loss. Okay, so that was a nice question. Okay, on to Article 1, Section 1.7. Oh, one more thing on, on the last one, I'm sorry. There was language surrounding the zoning inspector violations in the collection of fines, which seemed to exceed a local authority's ability to actually, you know, issue the violations and collect fines without some kind of statute.
And you know, the funny thing, that that language is actually in the enabling legislation.
Yeah.
But I have never seen any authority for a zoning official to decide what fine somebody should get and then tell him he has to pay it.
Right.
You have to go to court for that.
At least have some kind of structure because the zoning official could say 500, 200, 100, a million. So that, that is something that was, I think, had to be rectified. I think that's not something that we should continue now that we able to open this ordinance up and again. And there was no provisions for election or appointment of the chairman and vice chairman for the zoning board. And I don't know why it wasn't in there, most ordinances do have that, but now that's been changed to address that. 1.7, for administrators, Article 1, Section 1.7, Appeals. Again, this is the one where we talk about amendments to the rural and clean development subdivision enabling act of 1992 eliminates the zoning board, the planning board of appeal. It'd be really interesting. Now the planning board decisions will go directly to Superior Court. So it'd be very, very interesting where someone would go to the zoning board, do that as a board of appeals through the planning board, my whole career, that's probably set up, set up. Now you run right off to Superior Court and supposedly you have a calendar to deal with that. Very, very interesting. And again, it actually changes everything to, it changes the language to, to, to meet those, that new process, if you will. Which has to kind of be rewritten, because that longstanding appeal process is, it's not a foot on its own. Any questions on that?
Bill, I don't know if we're waiting, but you asked, so I'm just gonna say that it appears, you know, I sat over here in 1974 and '75 when we worked our way through the council through a zoning ordinance which actually never had. So we were the final, last town in the state to adopt zoning. Some people still think we shouldn't have it, but that's another story. And now I'm, I'm listening to the issues coming up here and there are so many of them. What we sat here and wrestled with 50 years ago. But now you specifically, the zoning board, where there are these modifications that are being made about its administration issues, but what are they, are they, what's, what significant issues? We don't have to get into it, I guess.
No, I, I think it's a great.
What are they doing? Because as appeals, we all know that people are taking appeals from planning to zoning and now.
To me, it's, it's a step toward Hunter Morlick, Massachusetts has, where it's statewide zoning. But in particular, the zoning board, I think what it does, and we'll get at it in the section, but it really takes the discretion out of decisions from the zoning board and kind of makes them play performance standards. If you can meet A, B, and C, you get kind of, again, rubber stamp approval. The removal of any kind of discretion or any kind of interpretation of whether or not a particular, for instance, special use permit is consistent with the tenants of a comprehensive plan, is all but eliminated. The idea that they say is that it shouldn't be a special use permit if it wasn't already found consistent with the comprehensive plan. It makes no sense whatsoever because you could have the same use, but its impact could be absolutely different on the comprehensive plan, even though depending on where it's located. So, so that is your biggest thing. And the other thing is they're removing the zoning board as an appellate board to the planning board. So it's like, say, it's local, not locally, it's going right to Superior Court. So yes, it's more statewide, take a little, jurisdiction out a little, I mean, that's my best guess.
Well, Article 1.
And you get laid around too because they're gonna be, they're gonna be requiring certain uses. Like you went from single family, dwelling, could have more households. I think you'll eventually see it where households in a dwelling unit is gonna be something that's just required by right in each community up to X number. Could be two now, could be five later. You, you're seeing this with the push with the accessory dwelling unit. With both the senate side and the house side up in this year's legislative session. It's, it's, at least one of them's a free-for-all. You can build it, you can rent it, you could not have, necessarily have to have a family member, you just go for it. It's just another unit that's on the books. And that's just two of the examples I can bring up now. 1.7. So this is a little bit of zoning, okay, so we were all set with 1.7. Okay, we'll go down to Article 2 now. Again, this is development plan review. This was, this was really odd because the way they took development plan review and they wanted to go back to the land development rights from zoning, but yet they make it almost identical to a minor or major land development. But yet it has these, you know, you know, four or five criteria that, you know, DPI can be used for. I was, I was confused, most people are confused. Some communities are choosing to keep it in. I myself think it's almost, and Karen can speak for herself, but it's almost indistinguishable from my land development projects. So why confuse and have both? I think the projects that kind of captured on the DPR, on urban and near urban, the four DPRs were only limited to permitted uses. Now it doesn't seem that way because if you read the legislation, it could be permitted or technically non-permitted uses.
Even though they didn't change the definition.
Even though they didn't change.
Definition says permitted uses, but then they allow them with special use permits.
Yeah.
When I was in law school, special use permit use was not a permitted use, but I guess it is now.
So you have to, you used to have to show the special use criteria, a discretion would imply, like, that particular instance, would it comply with it? It wasn't just that I have five stacking, if I had five stacking and a drive-through and that's part of the special use determination, that could be done in an office. It's, okay, I happen to be against a sensitive land use. Say I had a, you know, residential elder care facility behind me. And there was an environmental feature next to me. And because of those two, two things, the use necessarily is special use permit, could be granted somewhere else where it didn't have these ill effects. But in this case, the effects are inconsistent with the overall comp plan. It's how they're looking at it now. Now it's, it's an approved use because it was already deemed compatible with comprehensive plan, hence their item. So the special use permit now becomes, no more of the days where you can say it's inconsistent with the comprehensive, comprehensive plan and deny it. They've removed some of the denial, reasons for denial, we'll get into that later. But it really, at this point, is, to me, no different than just going to a building inspector and say, I checked off A, B, and C, I complied to these things, give me my permit. But in this case, I remember the development plan review because a lot of the towns were overusing it. A lot of the towns elected, the intent was, we would do an internal DPR as planning departments and we'd use judgment. Someone's coming in, they have a pre-existing house, dwelling, and they're changing from making widgets to something else. They're not doing anything to the building, nothing to the parking. You would internally look at that DPR to make sure it complied with parking and drainage and you do that internal. Then all of a sudden, thresholds were being installed by communities and they were lower and lower and lower. So essentially, anything you did required a DPR. Legislature, you know, saw that and felt it was being overused. And they wanted to limit it to only situations, basically, in the beginning, how it worked was, DPR was only gonna be used for like an adaptive reuse. We sell town hall, we have an adaptive use in town hall, they would give you the DPR to kind of, kind of facilitate that adaptive reuse. And, you know, that's kind of where it went this time, but yet they didn't change the definitions from where DPR only included permitted uses. So there's internal conflict. But for us, we've removed DPR. Using minor or major land development and whether that's legal or illegal, I, I don't know, we'll see, we'll see. But clearly, the minor or major land development process is identical. So, you know, I don't know what the issue would be on that. All right, so. So then we have further convoluted, so the convoluted between DPR and minor, major, now it's minor. I think that's, that's the takeaway. And this, these are the sections under the DPR that the state law provides the communities. These are the reasons why, right? So it's a historic district, we don't have it here, institutional, you know, development, design, educational hospital. See what they were trying to do here. Old hospitals, any kind of adaptive reuse in more of a urban or near urban setting, they're trying to give this DPR as a way of kind of speeding the drive. Adaptive reuse purpose, we just talked about that. That's could be this building, within a commercial zone, you have an old office building, class A office building, stinks now, so you make it all, you know, residential. So we didn't feel as if any of this was really external. This was more urban communities and that's why I don't see it, I don't really see a need for it. I think it's more conducive to adaptive reuse in the urban, near urban areas. Minor land development process, DPR, again, is identical. Moves development plan review from the definition, the procedure now includes, is now included in the ordinance. It's in the ordinance now, so now we yank it up in the ordinance. We're not bringing it over to land development, although some communities are doing that, into the land development subdivision. If we have to in the future, we could always dump it in land development subdivision areas. But it's just gonna confuse the public even more. Onto Article Three. This one is again subject to a new revision, as you see a yellow copy here, it's Article Three, better perform, not perform lots of uses, revision 10, 22, 23. So, yeah, this is what we talked about. Now adopts a proportionality standard for subs, substandard lots, changes zoning relief required and includes an amended merger clause. This was the bad boy to try to get redevelopment of undersized lots throughout the state. They have no bones about it, this is about undersized lots of wreckage being built on and getting away from the merger clause that was the rage in 1980. Merge lots to most closely meet the zoning which is located. Now this kind of goes back and says, well, you know, we need housing, we need lots, and we'll reopen it, and all you have to do is need a proportionality standard. So if we have three lots, you're eight feet from the side, you're eight feet from the side, you're eight feet from the side, as long as I'm eight feet from the side, you know, I mean...
I got another question about this, non-conforming lots. Is that women at the low moderate income housing?
No, any.
So if I come to mind, this was written by attorneys and politicians up there, how many non-conforming waterfront blocks do you ever run against a bank?
Time. Most of them were platted in pre-colonial town from where I was, my hometown and everything.
It's not even directed at stopping the problem.
And if you're old, if you're old like me, I remember why that was. It wasn't because we wanted to take rights away from people at five thousand square foot lots, it was that in pre-colonial time, they were cottage communities, and they were planted that way.
Their camps.
Just for that, right? Then we realized sometime in the 1970s, late 70s, that hmm, we have the environment that we probably shouldn't pollute, and that the septic systems and the redevelopment, the stormwater was polluting our environment. So then we seen this change in the 80s to merger clause, down zoning, but not for the purposes of taking people's rights away, but to balance the development with the environment. So you mentioned a good point, Narragansett, West, all those towns, Kennebec, at War, Pots of Cranston, most of those lots on the waterfront were pre-colonial plots, and this will reopen. It doesn't say necessarily that the CRMC promulgated standards for development needs to change. This was the argument I have. This silo was separate than the CRMC silo. We're talking about coastal properties, but there's separate promulgated regs for that through the Red Book and through, you know, the CRMC. And I don't know if they, this is in direct conflict with most of the Red Book policies, but in my, you know, 20 something years, I could say that I could probably find two or three consistencies. And the same thing here locally, if we're not talking about what, it doesn't matter, because locally, we talk about groundwater, right? We all have wells, a house is useless without a well. If we open each other's wells, then our property value is zero. So the more density you have, the less ability you have to manage. Now, the only thing that's factored a little differently now, and what they'll argue is, well, the septic systems are much greater now, they are able to attenuate pollutants they dream of in the 60s. But it's not without fail, it's not without fail, it doesn't prove in a technical way for pollutants. So, you know, there will be a balance that I don't think that this section looked at on the environmental page. This is gonna see, this is gonna be like, let's see what happens. What that does do, it merges a lot of lots, I don't know exactly how many lots there are, but you know the pre-permitted plots in the town better than I do, the other size areas in town, there's at least two or three of them, but it'd be those areas that are getting hit most. I've already seen developers purchase some properties that were quote unquote merged by operation.
I, I, this, this is so deja vu, because this was a big source of discussion when we were moving zoning ordinance out to the public, and that was the contiguous non-conforming lots, and must they be merged? And it was the feeling of the majority of the council that that shouldn't be in there, because it would discourage people from supporting it. So it wasn't placed in the zoning laws initially, but eventually, I wasn't any longer over there at the table, but eventually, it got put back in about the, you know, the contiguous non-conforming laws having to be merged, but not until a lot of cookie cutter had already been done. But anyway, I just, I'm sorry, I'm just...
Oh, it's okay. Just pointing out for the record, the differences between the yellow version and the other is Page One, you'll see the underline, it says, "Nonconformance occurs when a building, structure, sign, lock, or the use was legal when created or established but has not been established with the current zoning ordinance." So that's new language in the revised version. Then on Page Three, you have two sections, which is enumerated as five additions and enlargement, and except by special use permit was added. On Six, on Page Three, number Six, the expansion, again, except by special use permit. We go to the next paragraph, number Seven, on Page Three, the application, unless a special use permit is granted for the application. And then that same, number Seven, titled application, compliance with substandard 3.2, 2.5, 3.2, 2.6. Those are just substantive changes to the original, conform with the legislature, with the state law. All right, so any more questions on non-conformance in terms of lot remerge? Okay, the next one is Article Four, titled supplementary regulations. And again, you see a yellow packet for that, we're asking for revisions on that, on Article Four, titled supplementary regulations. This revision is 11, 27, 23A. This revision was on the request of the planning board, an email, an memorandum to Exeter Town Council, dated November 20, 2023. The planning board asked that design criteria from the old development, the old DPR be included within this section, in addition to laid around, changing and adding that to the minor or major land development. And you can see the revision listed as 11, 27, 23A, and it was on Page... Page Six, number Six, called performance and development standards. What this does is it takes over the old DPR standards, which the planning board felt that they worked really hard on in getting it in, and it was actually nice performance and development standard, and they felt that including, including it within the section to support the consideration for adaptive reuse was something pretty important. And they also suggested that also be included in the land development, major and minor land development projects. So that is the big change on the yellow that we're asking for consideration tonight for that revision. What else do we do? So this, again, this goes back to the 2020 statute on accessory dwelling units, makes it conform, it was an alternative that we looked, the planning board looked at, they just felt like this legislative session is just gonna start another accessory dwelling unit, why don't we just wait till the legislature gets done with this section to touch this again, because we've kind of, you know, you know, played around with this a few times. So the ADU law enacted in '22 is still in effect, however, there are several versions, I talked about the two versions I'm looking at now, from the Senate and the House side, they're vastly different. So it'll be interesting at the end of the session to see which one comes out, but there will be a minute. So this is the 14th article. The speaker had 14 pieces last year, 13, 14 passages, but 14 is the last one, he's a little short. This section, 4.7, is adaptive reuse, so that's the, that's the turn of the day. So adaptive reuse defines a review and approval process that addresses density of off-street parks and environmental restrictions. Essentially what it does is allows residential use as an approved use, permitted use within formal areas that could have been zoned commercial or had commercial uses. Think of office, think of the building across the street, think of this place right here. So across Rhode Island, the thought was, we have lots of areas along arterial roadways that were 1960 strip developments, retail, or in some communities, the old saturation of Class A office space that was absolutely not needed anymore with everyone going, you know, digital and home and Zoom. And can we convert those into low moderate income housing opportunities? And if we're gonna do that, can we put a process together that's really fast and easy? So this adaptive reuse, you'll see, is an attempt at trying to speed up these projects and making residential approved use and not something subject, subject to zoning approval in terms of reuse. So that adaptive reuse covers not only the exeter, the normal communities, and that's what the section will be addressing. The addition of the performance standards, the planning board thought was important to kind of mitigate any harm that that intent of adaptive reuse put out on the environment. For instance, if you go 15 dwelling units and, you know, an acre, say here, which the talk on the state was 15 dwelling units, an acre being the standard for, you know, density within, you know, these adaptive reuse areas, I don't know, in terms of well, production, setback, OWTS in this location, what kind of ramifications we have on the design and performance standards that we added in. And it's interesting that we look at, you know, municipal services, probably not much, we're just gonna take this as an example.
It's like a bad dream.
Yeah, water pollution, what would we do with all these OWTSs on the neighboring water pollution, water supply, do we have enough water here? We have radius setbacks, we have setbacks from neighboring residents, wastewater disposal, you know, how do we do it in conjunction with the water? Taking a look at unique areas, that would be something down there. Scenic roadway, because we are scenic roadway here, so what would that do in the case on affecting that scenic roadway? Water bodies, wellhead protection areas. So, so it's an attempt to try to get at least some real planning on adaptive reuse, is to just not have it as a rubber stamp. Whether or not that accomplishes that goal is yet to be seen. I mean, there's... So adaptive reuse is subject to land development project review, so we pop it out of the DPR, but we put it in the land development project review, essentially the same thing. Local ordinance that regulates adaptive reuse projects must have specific and objective provisions that are in line with this law and not contrary. You know, this is trying to have communities have, you know, not put barriers to development, redevelopment for adaptive reuse, about density and about parking, you know, for instance, if, if Tom wanted to get around it, they'd say an adaptive reuse project for every one unit, you need four parking spots. So that's a way of, of, you know, being able to deter that type of development. Most of the state laws now, they can't do that. There's, there's a limit here, which you can do in terms of restriction to make sure that the adaptive reuse happens. And again, that's the planning board recommendation, and I'm asking for consideration on behalf of the planning board. The book section on that was... Any more questions on what was Article Five? Okay, we're getting there, we're getting there. I have a quick eat cellular, we can get easier from here. The decision-making authority is shifted to, you know, from the zoning board to the planning board, and we talked about that earlier. So when you sell your, you now take consideration of that, particularly use in town, the process has, has been changed. And there was some changes that included the unified development process, that included special use permit and major land development that would go through the planning board, so that verbiage had to actually change, and there were some, you know, corrections made to, to legitimize some of the language, maybe even compliant with state law, and then some clarifying language, but mainly the zoning to the planning board. That really is kind of summed up in that section. I said, I told you initially that, that theme would be throughout the zoning ordinance, and that's an example of, of a real, like, instance where that occurs. As you can see, that shift goes right to the planning board now from the zoning board. So no times, no dates, no agendas, staffing considerations, they all require decisions, decision, writing decisions, decisions that normally would be kind of a hybrid now between a zoning and a land development. So you have findings for a land developer, but now you're acting as a zoning board for appeal of a special use permit, so there needs to be specific finding. And we approach them, you know, looking around and making great decisions, the planning board, who we myself.
And I've had many talks with Bill about, we're going to need to look at how that planning department is set up to deal with these, and maybe bring some things in, bring some people in, just move things around.
I think they...
Not for now, but is...
Right.
If you see all the work that's gonna get dumped there...
You just won't do it.
Yeah.
I think there needs to be an interim plan where you're gonna have to bring some private, you don't have to put it on the time, you know, some consultants in so that you don't have OPEB and you don't have fringe benefits, you know, long-term, maybe have a different structure, but you're going to need, most towns are gonna need, if we don't have a TRC, which is Technical Review Committee, we're gonna need a third pilot and an engineering at every least, you know, things that they can report back to the planner and say, okay, we looked at the engineering, and this is what you have to do, this is how it performs, this is how it performs. So you might have a couple of consultants that you may have to lean on, maybe put on in court for years, that we can have on court as these developments come in. That frees up decision-making time, me writing decisions, and also frees up my review, from very technical review, it takes hours sometimes, when a firm could probably do it in half the time, because I'm not an engineer, right? So an engineering firm could do it probably more efficiently than I could. So, medical marijuana, seven. Text is modified to align with state law requirements, unnecessary changes to the major provided regulations, step four, certain section outlines the process of obtaining special use permits in the land development. So what is this set? This is another example where this zoning board, which traditionally in the board, here matters and uses that, you know, have this bit of discretion or compliance or elements of... That could be various from site to site. No longer with the zoning board, it's now with the planning board under the development, you know, act. And so the necessary changes in the verbiage here transmits this to the planning board in the process of unified development. In many cases, you know, medical marijuana, cell, you know, cell towers, they may have a company mention variance to it, of course, special use permit required, will go onto the planning board now. So, very interesting to me, because in the end of this, you have to wonder, you know, the traditional zoning board being more of a regulatory power, and the planning board being more of a policymaking body, it's kind of been flipped on its head mandatorily. And given the planning board, a lot of those, those powers, and so you, in my opinion, have a kind of a pseudo-regulatory board, and the planning board, and you have one that's redundant, and the zoning board, but yet that board's been taking a lot of powers away to determine discretionary uses.
You get the feeling maybe Bill and I don't like the legislature.
Sorry, yeah, I mean, planning may say, this could be a good thing for the town, then zoning can sit down and say, but how is that money in path, what, maybe we, but now it looks like, that's the old version I'm talking about, now it's like, and it's a good...
I mean, I, it really, I worry too about the lack of bifurcation, you have basically one board now determining things, and if it doesn't get to that level of a board, you have a major crater that may may not live in the town, or may not have, you know, you didn't, now it's bifurctated to the point where I don't know that it's going to meet the intended objective of speeding things up, you know, because everyone likes to blame all these regulations for slowing down development and not building houses and making houses unaffordable. There are a lot of reasons, I've been doing it a long time, there's a lot of reasons. And... And if process is 5% of that, we can do things in process that is much better than what we're doing now. We could afford different opportunities and different avenues to get the development that we want, while balancing with the environment or, more importantly, the local characteristics of a community. Community that's rural and has characteristics like Exeter are going to want different things than a developed, a community that loves development, that feels that that's part of who they are. They should be different. They should be able to manifest in a way that reflects the identity of the community and its people. This isn't one size fits all. If anything, it takes the principles of urban development and the urban and near urban and taking it and shoving it down into rural populations that have much different strategies, ideas, and capability in which to bring on the development. Mainly the lack of infrastructure, smaller government, all things that, you know, people may want, right? Smaller government, no big OPEB, no other public employee benefits, hundreds of millions of dollars, you know, clean-running local government now is going to be, you know, kind of driven by a state policy of one size fits all. And I think that's a lot of the arguments the planners are having is that we can do this in a different way. Housing and production can be had in a different way, not just kind of rehashing a bunch of old regulations that may or may not work. That gets me to nine, which is affordable housing. You'll see a yellow packet on this one also. It's Article nine, affordable housing. It's revision 11, 7, 23. The only really revision here, because I had some minor changes that were missed and the last inclusionary ordinance repealed, is that the new version actually states when this honorable body repealed. Remember, it was a month ago. Two months ago, I was here before inclusionary zoning repealed that. So it just adds the areas that were already repealed and then fills in areas that were either incorrect or just missing on the first go-round. But not really more substantive to than removal of the inclusionary zoning for all the reasons I gave this honorable body beforehand. That doesn't even goes away. Later on, I'll be before this honorable body to tell you, we're looking at a $100,000 grant to look at zoning ordinance, to look at housing in a different way. Can we achieve affordable housing that's equitable for what this town is in a different way? I'm affirming that we can. And I don't think it comes through the inclusionary zoning. And I think most will agree that inclusionary zoning has tampered with by the state, has ruined a decent tool. The good news is there are a bunch of other tools that are available that you can work with the community and have low mod income built into development, say of seven housing units. And have particular areas that are designated for low mod or workforce housing that makes sense. Like a lot of water, the roadways, they have infrastructure in and around it. Why not carve out a little area for that? You know, village districts have a density in there that addresses low moderate income for the seven units. Could be something that would be good if the village, over the district, sought to be applied somewhere in town. We'll be coming back, but this is just, we told you why you repealed it. We repealed it because it actually did not achieve the goal of meeting our 10%. It went backwards because for every low mod that was built, there were two more market rate homes. And the math, the arithmetic just doesn't line up. Won't get that percentage that was claimed. I don't know if it was just an error in terms of the arithmetic that they did, but it just clearly doesn't work. What it does do is it downsides. It makes smaller zones, which increases density. So if it was renamed the housing generation bill, it's probably all set, but it isn't. So that's what that is, just kind of melding the two together. That revision is just referring back to the repeal that this town council had already considered. 10 in here, but I think I mixed 10 with... There's an Article 10 in here. It's just planned village development. And the only changes in that planned village development was, again, there was affordable, housing affordability section, which is 10.2, 1. And that was changed to read, at least one low mod income dwelling unit shall be provided for every seven market rate dwelling units. And again, that's only for planned village development, which is an overlay district. Some time ago, in the vision of Exeter, this town felt the PBB overlay district could be applied in two, three areas of town to have a higher density area that's more similar to a village. And that would be supported by a community public well. And as part of that, you could also have low mod. It hasn't been applied yet. It's still in your village, it's still in your zoning ordinance. And so that affordability component was added to it. And that is really, you know, the only substantive change to that. Renewable energy. Eleven, the text is modified to align with state law. Development plan review process has now been changed to major land development. So again, we talk about the solar. We all love solar in town, right? We know the process we're going through. And so the development plan review process that in some areas apply to some different types of solar uses have now been changed to major land development. And again, that's consistent with the new state law. So that will be reflected in, I think it's page eight, nine. Page eight, for small scale solar energy, page eight to see. All small scale solar energy facilities required to obtain a major development project in addition to the local standards. We're a development plan review for solar canopies and small scales of transformation. I think that's it. That should, you know, take us through all the changes and the four different sections that were amended for the reasons I said. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and all of that, and members above the town council. Thank you.
Anybody from the council have questions of Bill?
I always say when he speaks to us as the honorable counsel, I think we also have an honorable player for the work that you've done, Bill. And when you say 50% or whatever of communities aren't going to be able to comply and hasn't had the people working on this project the way that you have.
Thank you.
It's no question.
It's an amazing time, it's an amazing time to get to work with an individual waitress. It's not going to last forever, but it's pretty enjoyable.
I'd be remiss not to say it. It was this town council who decided to go forward to get me help. And our consultant, Karen, if I had a consultant like Karen, everything I do, we wouldn't be worried about hiring other people because absolutely just amazing.
If I had a planner like Bill.
Thank you for that. That really, that really helped me, that you gave me this what I need. And I appreciate the town council do that because it's...
Well, as part of this public hearing and what has been revealed to us, I'm going to suggest on the January agenda that we place an item at something to the effect of modifications or something of the planning department or current status or some language that speaks to the fact that we should begin a discussion of what Bill has suggested here tonight that he needs.
Yes.
That's my suggestion. I don't know if we can do it as part of the public hearing, but I would suggest it emerges from this discussion here that we need it.
And maybe some additional compensation for our part-time planner that has not, probably since day one, been working part-time. And I don't think it's a good look for Exeter to be taking advantage of this smart, capable person by paying him half of what he deserves.
Not even half, thank you.
And that can be part of the modifications.
Yeah, and that can be part of the...
That can be part of the modifications of the planning department. It's what do we do about a planner that's working full-time? I drove by as I said, and the vehicle was out here, because he was obviously prepping. Can I warn you?
Yes, but thank you, but I would, which physically is coming up. I think consultants, the town...
Okay, modifications in any ways, whatever those emerge. Is he honest? Do you know what I'm saying? Whatever it is we decide and whatever you like, we need to discuss. Anyway, that's my point about modifications or...
Okay, I do have two members in the public signed up to speak in the public hearing. The first one is Aza Davis.
Okay, so first, I have written a seven-page document, two pages of minor clerical errors and five substantive comments that I hope they went to the council. And I believe also, I'm asking a question of Lynn first, that these are considered part of the public record now for the meeting, because I would prefer not to read these if I don't have to. And I understand that if somebody has submitted written documents to a public hearing, they aren't considered part of the record.
You have to request it, I think.
Asking that I'm requesting that now, is that okay? Because I would prefer not to go through all of these if I can avoid it. All right, so first.
Mr. Davis, I think the town council needs to take a vote on whether or not they'll accept it as part of the record. So that you have that on the record.
Yeah, that's it right there.
Right, so in other words, Mike was absolutely correct. You can't just send it in. You have to submit it. Submit it to be officially admitted to the council, I think, instead of make a motion.
To accept it.
To accept it for the record, to be part of the record.
So...
Second.
All favor?
All right.
Good, thank you. I don't think that saves a lot of time. So first of all, Bill and Karen, I'd like to congratulate you because this is excellent work. But in something this big, so deep, there is, it's not going to be perfect. And there are some things that I think do deserve some consideration. First, I'd like to comment on the topic that Cal raised about the changes to the zoning board and those appeals going directly into the Superior Court now. As somebody who's seen that from the other side, the record of our zoning board is perfectly unblemished in supporting the planning board and the zoning inspector in all of their decisions going back at least five or six years. Now that implies our zoning board and our zoning, I'm sorry, our planning board and our zoning inspector are making perfect decisions. I have a hard time believing that, but I believe the same thing happened in other towns. And I think that's what was driving the decision to short-circuit that appeals process. And a lot of people are going to go right to court on that. Now, one of the things that I did see is that based on the changes to what is considered an aggrieved party language, some of this is actually going to make it easier for somebody like me to bring cases to court and circumvent the zoning board of appeals, which I do appreciate because sometimes I found that it's a lot better to have an impartial third party make a decision rather than somebody who got vested interest in the town. Some of the substantive languages, changes in here, based on the new definition of what an aggrieved party is, will allow me to bring, or others, to bring legal challenges to this zoning ordinance. I do want to highlight a few of these because I didn't get a chance to review all of the edits that just came out since I submitted this. So I want to highlight a couple of things that I think could make some sense to change either now before it's passed or shortly afterwards to address some potential improvements. First, page three, accessory use. You don't have principal use defined in the zoning code. This can result in significant confusion. It has happened where a former planning board member, Frankie Gueborio, attempted to get the agricultural use of the pasture that I used to own over here prohibited because the principal use, which is residential, was not established yet. Building Inspector Ron DiFrancesco put an end to that by saying the principal use in that case was agricultural, so it was not a problem. I would recommend defining principal use as the highest use for the zoning table that a property is currently being used for. Otherwise, you've just declared every piece of residential land that's currently being utilized for agriculture, if it doesn't have a house on it, you're now making it non-conforming with zoning, which violates the Right to Farm Act. On page eight, the farm definition, there were a few problems with this. As it's worded, the definition excludes startup farms for five years from being considered a farm. This is restraint of trade. It represents preferential treatment to existing farms. It potentially violates the Right to Farm Act. And there's no reason for the time exclusion. It's likely to hurt subsistence and small farmers the most. Next one up, page 12, land disturbing activity. Farming meets that definition. If you're going to require farms to qualify under land disturbing activity and look for planning and zoning approvals, that also likely violates the Right to Farm Act. A little bit further down, page 16, owner. The premises is not defined. That could be a problem, particularly with affordable housing. As it stands right now, the habitat for amenity model is that they own the land and the houses on the land are owned by the inhabitants, okay? So you actually have a situation where the lot ownership is divided from the home structure ownership. The problem with this definition is that you don't have a clear owner for that property, so you don't have a indicator of who the actual premises owner is as it's defined. Some of the other ones, page 21, the zoning ordinance. There's a serious problem with this language because you're adopting this and the certifying compliance either to a comp plan right now that's obsolete by state statute or a comp plan which is still in development, which has not been adopted by the town and its voters yet, okay? This invites legal challenge as it's worded. Because as it's worded, somebody needs to make a finding that all of this new language is consistent with the old obsolete comp plan, which is still not meant to be superseded, or that the finding needs to reflect that all of this language reflects compliance with the comp plan, which is not adopted yet. Okay, so page 26, B3. Any special use or development or human activity generally harms the environment to the extent that some natural conditions get supplanted. It could include a single tree or a bush, could be anything that consumes electricity generated by fossil fuels. I recommend changing this to not harm the environment to be environmentally sound, which comprehends the potential trade-offs, such as the water use or plant modifications, okay? Page 35 and 5A. This language precludes residential compounds on state roads since by default, they are not town-accepted. There's a number of large parcels along Route 2, 3, 102, and 165 that residential compounds could otherwise be appropriate for. I recommend changing that to town or state. Okay, private roads, page 38B. There's no spec for private roads and residential compounds in the subdivision ranks, and I don't think there are any in the proposed amendments for this coming December meeting. This is a significant oversight. Every road, public or private, is used by others besides the residents along the road, even if it's just the UPS driver. I recommend ending that sentence as characteristics of a land period and reading what follows. 38C, per the 50-foot front requirement on the town... Per the 50-foot front requirement on the town or state as it should read accepted road, this paragraph makes no sense. Furthermore, because there's no design standard for a private road, using pavement here is not appropriate, given how many gravel roads the town still has. The word roadway would be better, and the sentence starting any professional engineer is nonsensical. That entire paragraph should be deleted. Page 57, 4B, the RU3 requirement. This makes no sense when zones with less population density, RU4 and CR5, would benefit even more. 58, 5B. Again, the five-year requirement has no place in the zoning ordinance. It represents preferential treatment, restraint of trade, and interference with interstate commerce. Precludes anyone from starting a CEA facility unless they're converting an existing farm. This forces new potential farmers to use obsolete archaic methods and confers an illegal advantage to existing operations. 59C, light elimination. This may be appropriate at night, but it makes no sense during daylight hours, because ambient light will be higher levels than the facility lighting. As it's wording, it means any facility has to operate permanently at 24 hours as a dark building, and one of the main functions for a greenhouse is to let ambient light energy, ambient light in to reduce energy use. It should be modified to reflect light dissipation in excess of ambient levels. 61D has the same issue. Okay, page 108, last paragraph. That's written, it supplies to all trailers, not just trailer homes, which would also make boat trailers, firewood trailers, and campers nonconforming uses. Trailers should be changed to trailer homes. Page 136, decommissionment. What's missing in this whole section is an understanding of how land improvement in general and solar systems in particular work, from both an engineering and economic perspective. When land is improved, it tends to almost always stay that way for the same use in perpetuity until or unless something more economically attractive becomes of interest to the landowner, who then has to determine if it's worth the conversion cost to do it. That's why once a house is built, it usually makes a lot more sense to remodel or expand it and keep the used residential, and rip it down and convert it to another use. Solar systems aren't monolithic. They're made up of hundreds of panels, dozens of inverters operating parallel. They don't suddenly fail and shut down and start growing weed, because the output doesn't degrade. The output for a given panel these days drops about 1% per year, so in 20 years, you've lost 20% of your generating capacity. The trend accelerates, but even in the worst case, it takes almost 100 years to drop to zero. That's if you don't do any maintenance and replace any failed components. Meanwhile, a system that's 20 years old or more has a number of economic advantages. At that point, it's fully paid for, all the capital and loans are paid, it's amortized, it doesn't have engineering permitting, construction, legal, and fuel costs. The main costs are taxes and insurance. These older systems now running today are the reason why they can unbid new systems for the sale of electricity to the utility. They're the primary reason why solar power now costs less per kilowatt hour than conventional generation of all types. The posts and racks have similar lifespans to the street light posts, well in excess of 20 years. They also don't fail suddenly. The decommissioning section in the following financial survey imposes significant costs on solar systems which aren't applied to other structures. Solar systems on roofs will have much shorter lifespans due to compromising the roof integrity and shorter lifespan of the underlying roof, and they need to be replaced every few decades. If you want a decommissioning bond, it should be on the rooftop systems, not ground systems. Page 139 through 143, the plant requirements. This entire section belongs in the subdivision regs, because it is planning, it's not a zoning requirement. All of that should move over to the other section. Page 139, insurance. It's discriminatory to apply only to solar and not other types of development. If you're trying to protect the town's potential exposure, you really should have this applied to any development project. Solar projects have lower claim rates than regular house construction or pretty much anything else anyone would be applying for. Same with requiring automatic submission of an impact state, the 141B. When you only do this for solar, it's premature, it's overly restrictive. This should be removed and handled upon request of the planning board, just like impact states for all other types of applications. And the last one we talked about is medical marijuana. The extent this section, which is page 144 to 149, the extent this section covers planning and design requirements like the solar section, it also belongs in the subdivision and development regs. To the extent these facilities are required to be located indoors and therefore grow using artificial lights and hydroponics, except for the acreage, they are all CEA greenhouses. This contradiction illustrates the issue with defining CEA by acreage I highlighted previously, because CEA is specifically prohibited to grow marijuana. So you have a contradiction between those two terms in this ordinance. Thank you.
I have one individual, Wendy Fenner-Aubin. Did I say that correctly?
Yes, yes. First of all, I wanted to say, like a bad penny, I won't go away. I'm working with you all to get the West Shore on Blue Lake turnaround fixed up in Calhoun. He asked the question I wanted to ask. Have we got it surveyed? Has it been surveyed yet? So I'm assuming that we're not moving forward with--
This is a public hearing on proposed regulations.
Okay.
You signed it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We do have public comment. You're on.
That's coming.
Okay, I'm sorry. Sorry.
A little head start.
All right.
Any other questions from anybody here?
Mr. President, if I could--
Identify yourself for the clerk yourself.
I am Scott Malar. I am the chair of the Exeter Planning Board. I'm here representing the planning board. As you know, it's required in the Exeter zoning ordinance that the planning board issue an advisory opinion, and we have at our meeting on November 28th, to strongly endorse and respectfully ask the council to move forward with this ordinance. We think the amendments are needed per state law, despite the fact we're not happy with the state law. It is what it is, and we need to move forward. But the planning board did issue some recommendations, and Bill so kindly already went through those. But we did ask for a definition of agricultural land, conservation development at the term cluster, at the term public water system. Bill very kindly already added that into the amendments that are before you. We also suggested in Section 4.7 that we add a new Section 6, performance and development standards. Again, Bill, way ahead of the game, has already put that in front of you. I just urge you to consider that. But I'd also like to take this opportunity to really thank Bill and Karen for doing really an amazing amount of work in frankly an unreasonable amount of time. I just want everybody to understand what, I think this is a tremendous, very significant effort to get this amount of work done. And being a part-time planner is just frankly amazing. And he really deserves a tremendous amount of credit. And I think as Bill outlined, his new responsibilities moving forward, I think we really do need to look at providing more resources for the planning department. More hours perhaps for Bill, some assistance, but Exeter doesn't want to be in the position of allowing bad development, because we just didn't have the capacity to review it and approve it, and it gets approved by default. So again, thank you so much for the opportunity to come out.
Thank you.
Could I speak? Scott, thank you for basically endorsing what I've suggested. And I ask you to try to come to the January meeting, so you can be part of a discussion on modification of the department, and you may have some ideas we could crawl in here to.
Or a memo, or both?
Or something.
Happy to.
But just sometimes discussion helps to bring out, you know, new thoughts and ideas. Dan, could I also say, regarding Asa's comments, we have, you've all received the copy that was forwarded to us, that Bill had sent along to Karen for comment, so thank you for that.
Can we include that, Karen's--
Yes, we--
Well, it's part of the record, yeah.
It should be.
You should make that part of the record. If you're making that, you should also make it part of the record, the recommendation of the planning board. Make sure that that's a part of the record you're putting.
Should we make a motion?
Make a motion to accept the recommendation of the planning board as part of the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I will also make a motion to make the memo dated 11/22/23 from Bill Deepass Whale. Davis' comments on draft amendments, which is prepared by Karen Ellsworth, insultably hired, make that part of the record. All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to-- So--
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
What you doing?
I don't know.
It's a absolute evil liability, but I don't--
I want to make a motion to accept the package of proposed amendments to the Exeter zoning ordinance. Do you do, I need to read all of them?
Did-- I have the first cover sheet that I had in my hand.
Article 1, Section 1.2 definitions.
Actually, the one on the agenda would be, I don't know if you have to read it all. You have to read all that. That covers it all.
You say proof to have it covered here.
Okay, I will make the motion to accept the proposed amendments to the Exeter Code of Ordinances due to legislative changes effective January 1, 2024, that are on the agenda.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Thank you again. Thank you both again.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Huge thank you.
Good luck everywhere. And Scott, thank you for taking it as supported.
Next up is public comment. The first one is Asa Davis.
All right, so thank you for the check. In turn, for the reasons indicated, contrary to the town stance, I don't think we've done yet, based on your exact agenda for tonight, maybe you don't either. Turns out some of Matt Scheck's affidavit was false, contradicted by the town's own 2009 public records and eyewitnesses, only recently discovered, but since the judge relied on it in reaching her decision, this should rise to the level of perjury. Hopefully, this turns into a better late than never situation. Town billing records show the affidavit was prepared with the aid of Marusac and our members of his firm. If you want to do something for public safety, maybe remove barriers? Fire chiefs from multiple towns gave talks to the D E M about this past brush fire season. No access and no time resources to move barriers were issues raised. You've seen multiple cases of fire risk created on my land by trespassers. We have two more brush fires this past month on 102 and at L.A. Last time we were in court, Seifol said I had filed a dozen cases against the town on the judicial portal. That didn't ring true, so I checked. This might be another gift that keeps giving, like Olivia's comments about ethics that led to four judgments for Ellis, Patterson, Matt Scheck, and Morgan. On the judicial portal, I didn't find a dozen cases from me against the town, but I did find 65 pages of cases involving the town, totaling 167 cases total. Quick review against comparable local towns, including Hopkington, Richmond, Charleston, West Greenwich, Boston, Little Compton. We ranked fifth in population, we're first in both total costs, total cases, and cases per capita. Even if you took off all of mine, the town still ranks first in total cases and second in cases per capita. That doesn't include ethics, A G rulings, and D E M violations. There are dozens of tax cases handled by Ron Warren, the Smithfield debt collector. You know who's missing from that section? Cal Ellis for underreporting the real estate transactions that were the subject of his ethics problems and restatements. When it comes to your own obligations, it's good to be on the council, I guess. Who's getting hurt by this? The taxpayers, the people you represent. Who benefits? The lawyers. There's a saying about leadership positions, you should leave before you become the problem. Maybe this applies to our legal council, too. I suggest maybe the council check in with Hopkington, West Greenwich. What are they doing differently to wind up with case loads less than half of ours? Michael Febrin, you were the top vote getter last election. You ran on a platform, including reducing the town's leading legal expenses. Are you winning on that? Maybe talk to those towns might help get somewhere. The next time Seifol wants to stand up and claim something about my cases, he needs to get his facts straight first, particularly when he's doing it in front of a judge. And judging from the town's legal record, as shown by the judicial portal, the next time you worry about town legal bills, maybe it's time to look into understanding. Thank you. You're right, sorry, I forgot about that. We go to the top one. I think Mike was number two.
Three.
It's a roll, isn't it?
Yeah, it is.
Next is Mrs. Aubrey.
Sorry about before. That's a don't worry about it.
Glad to have you here.
Again, I just, I'm going to keep coming back until we can get the safety issue resolved.
Normally, we're not supposed to talk to you during public comment, but I'm going to ask Rob, because we did hire a surveyor to survey that. I don't believe he's gotten there yet.
I know he's come here to go into the vault for some records. I know he's gotten that far, and he hasn't answered my calls. I don't call him every day, we're very busy, but when I have checked in, he's not returned my calls, so I don't know where he stands.
We could put in a call and see where he's at.
Yeah, yeah. I'm just thinking about the town, too, because you're going to have your plows in there. You're going to be beating the heck out of them coming in, you know? And the second comment I just wanted to make was, I hope that the town council members know how hard the library and the social services worked together for the past youth teen fundraiser. It was a marvelous turnout. They had a lot of teen toys donated in the state of Allen. We have a lot of little kids' things given, but not a lot of teens, and they took it upon themselves to use their youth fair. So Matthew's Wish came in, and the state police came in, and we had dogs there. The other piece that really helped out was being able to push that out through the Exeter Social Services and your formats and all that stuff. So thank you for doing that.
All right, thank you. Next up is new business, number nine. A town planner, request for approval of resolution supporting the Exeter River of Housing Municipal Technical Assistance Grant in the amount of $100,000. President Bill, this is a normality or--
Yes, Mr. President, honourable members of the town council, my name is Will B. Spies, town planner. This is a resolution, and we're asking the town's council to consult. And it's a resolution of support for the acceptance of R. Allen Housing Municipal Technical Assistance Program grant award. Took it upon myself to apply for the award. We had some preliminary approvals that occurred a couple of months ago, and then we followed up with a hard sell to R. Allen Housing. We did lay the fact that this town, using its own funds, without any use of grant funds, completing a comprehensive plan of $200,000. We've hired consultants to work on the legislature and redesign of the land development regulations and the zoning ordinance. And at very least, we should get a grant to assist us to move forward with our zoning ordinance. And so I did apply for that grant with Libra Planners, and we did receive an award of $100,000 with a grant. They require that the town council give a grant assurance, saying that you like the award, you want to go forward with it. It is 0% in terms of any kind of match, other than my in-kind time, which I got a ton of time. But I think it's really important, because it's going to cover the following areas. An alternative to inclusionary zoning, we know we yanked it out, but we're at 10.35, we're above the 10%, which would be very-- Inclusionary, an alternative to inclusionary zoning, we know we yanked it out, but we're at ten point three five, we're above the ten percent, we should be very proud of that. That can slip very fast. They have a lot of development, it's in the works, people want to come in, we've seen it all. So, we need to really get on alternatives to inclusionary zoning that'll keep our low mod above the ten percent. We need to, a multifamily housing ordinance, we don't have one here. I know everyone doesn't want one, and, but we need to comply with state law and we need to at least address multifamily units. How they were addressed in the past here, I guess they were just through confidence, because we have a lot of multifamily. So, we're gonna really look at strategies to, you know, how we can structure an ordinance that can appropriately have multifamily in a way that is also balanced with the environment. So, it's not free for all in terms of density. You gotta change your use table. I mean, phone booths are still in your use table. I don't know if anyone remembers, but I remember.
That was one of my questions with the public hearing, so we're gonna go through that. You just had this discussion.
Yes. The other thing that we don't have is we don't have classification of uses, which is very helpful in establishing special use criteria and standards and objectives, because you can almost refer to an umbrella of uses.
So, we're gonna clean that all up to where...
Clean it all up, put more contemporary uses in. You know, Umbrella Factory is probably gonna leave. And we're gonna do a good job finally of cleaning that use table up, which will also help us with the special use, developing special use criteria. We're going to address the land development subdivision regulations. They're awfully outdated. We've got a new checklist format, it's a lot easier to use than the five fifteen checklist we have right now. We're gonna bring it down to maybe one checklist that has major liner, and that's about it. We're also gonna look at setting up a land use board, a zoning board of approval guide, a guide that I can hand to public and say, this is a guide of the process, so that we don't actually explain the process fifteen times when we're up there for everyone that comes in, which just eats up the time of the couple of people we have working there. Should be intuitive, easy to read, can handle it, this is the process, and give you some direction. Because the public community should be able to come in, go on the website, and understand what the application is without a lot of interpretation. We're gonna talk about how we address maybe the substandard lots of record and undersized lots. We can't change the law, we might be able to put some standards in there that can at least put some guardrails on redevelopment of those lots. Unified development review, while we say that now we have to do it, I don't have an application. And by the way, January, I got my first unified development. I don't even have an application form for it. So, we'll be able to not only put an application form, but also three, four to board, a guidance of approvals under the unified development procedures, especially for special use requirements, special use variances. So, they know what they're asking for, they know what the burden is, what the criteria is, and they can go through and build a record for the record of decision. We don't have any of that, because we don't have unified development as of this time. And then zoning ordinance, there's some notice requirement differences, so we need to change, get some paperwork for that, maybe have a better process. I think what's lacking here is, is a process. There's no process, it's, it's kind of, you know, ad hoc, or even free for all. That's what we're trying to achieve here. The other thing that we're gonna look at is we, the council president and I had met with this town council's backing, with the state of Rhode Island last year, Lad Center. Thanks for your support. The government put a hundred thousand dollars, that RFP is almost done. It's only taking the state three, four years, months to go.
Was it more, was it a hundred plan or two fifty's?
Hundred thousand dollars.
Towards planning over there.
Toward creating a master plan, the idea that we all agree on the uses that should go here and the ones that should not. I built in a review from this particular on the actual zoning ordinance that will provide that. So, we can build, kind of, merge both of those projects together. Actually, we're merging all three.
I gotta give credit where credit's due, through this process at Lad, where me and Bill went up there and began, and then two or three meetings here. Two of the individuals that we started with, basically giving us the finger, were the ones that got fired with the little experiment down here in Philadelphia.
Oh, really?
And then after that, there, you and him. When I handed them the Browning Mill Pond decision, they basic, one of them made the comment, I will get the legislation changed and go around your back. And after they left, they had not heard of the Browning Mill Pond decision.
Of course not, but they...
After they got fired or left or whatever, then the whole tune changed up there. And Julie Casner was been working on it too, that's who got the money into that budget board. He brought it up, she got it submitted in there, this was what, in May?
Yes.
This was at the end of their budget season, so. Gonna give credit where credit's due, so.
You can always remind them to credit.
This is just asking for...
Alright, 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 just a minute. But Bill, can I just say, ask you something? These ambitious initiatives you just outlined, the, are these, these initiatives you think can grow out of this grant? This grant, or that, this, this grant, this is your one?
No, this is the grant. Yeah, the ones I spoke with, those are actually deliverable.
This is separate from Lad, Lad is a lower...
No, I understand that, I thought I'm gonna question it, I understand. I'm asking, do you see for these initiatives coming out of this grant? I don't think any one of us has any question but support for it.
Yes, there will be, to answer your question, councilman, they will be deliverable, so you'll get a hard copy. Like we looked at, there'll be ordinance, there'll be draft, you can change them, but there will be something that the planning board and the town council could consider on all these avenues. We change it, that'll be, you know, future changes to zoning and land development.
Just two comments. First of all, I want to say, Cal, you brought up Browning Mill Pond.
You did.
Oh, Dan did. Karen and I were co-council on that. And it was because of that case that I grew to understand that when this project came up, there was only one person I wanted working on it, and it was Karen. So, it came out of Browning Mill Pond. Our collaboration in that case is really, really a very good part.
Some of us sat through and remember.
That's number one. Number two, Bill, you said that the, you're gonna take the Umbrella Factory out of the use table. I suggest you keep it, because I know a manufacturer from the Amazon that's looking to relocate it.
You're kidding.
I am kidding.
We never know here. We never know. We never know. Hope springs eternal.
That'll be the motion.
Yeah, sure, I'd support the...
Resolution.
To move forward with a grant. You've already been received.
We've already awarded, they just need the local authoritative body to agree on the resolution.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next up.
Lynn, you've got it.
Next up, Public Works Awarding a Bid Power Washer. You're up, Rob.
Yeah, we've received one, but fortunately, it does meet the required specs. Done some research on it, it's a very good unit. There's service parts, all that stuff available for this particular unit.
This came from Kyle when I was down there visiting them one day in the vault. I was having a bad day with a rusty truck in my shop. And I go down to their shop and I told them, this is one of the mine. And turns out, the whole power washer they got is like sixteen or eighteen years old. It's similar to what I used to own. And it's broken all the time, and we can't get it serviced from a few local dealers that's non-existent. Now, there was still one left, that's our one. So, I go, we're gonna power washers, because they needed the trucks with the salt, so.
And this comes equipped with the undercarriage wash, it's a complete unit, just what we need. Better than what we have, for sure. More volume, that's what we're looking for, more actual water volume.
Make a motion, you should give a presence.
Oh, good, you make a motion, okay. I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of a power washer from Power Wash Sales for the amount of seven thousand three hundred ninety-five dollars even, from Power Wash Sales.
Power Wash America?
Power, Power Wash America.
Power Wash American?
Yeah. I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Alright. Next up, Seating Town Sergeant, request for approval, uh, request for approval of mutual traffic safety detailed assistance agreement with towns of North Kingston, West Greenwich, Richmond, South Kingston, East Greenwich, and Hopington. This popped up about a week before Thanksgiving, and there are just these poles. Scope needs four to eight constables a day for the next two months. So, two up. Jim drafted these up right away.
I probably would like to add Foster and Gloucester, because right now Foster and Gloucester are actually helping me fill in the...
Can we add that right now to this?
You can't, you can't, just direct me to a similar one.
Because we did one, three separate towns, it's the same word against the town, this team.
Right.
Because he does have someone from Boston down here working right there. And Gloucester?
And Gloucester.
Isn't that one town?
Foster, Gloucester, Peter.
Three, three, so strong.
I know, I used to live in Situate, so I went to Pontyanset, and I used to hear Foster, Gloucester all the time.
The rest of us went to work.
We, we have to approve it as a council, although we can go to these other towns in South. If you don't know, the other towns, are they a council, are they a police company?
This is a step away.
But hopefully, we get it done, because this classic example was the Christmas tree lighting. They were around the road for nine hours that day, then come here and South, if you shorthand it, so.
I mean, I, I have been getting assistance from the state police, I have a trooper Wednesday and Thursday. Foster's been filling in a lot, Gloucester's been helping me out a lot. And all my constables are just getting exhausted. Wes Gumwich has been actually letting us use their cruisers, because I don't have enough cars for all my constables. It's been, it's been an undertaking, as, as you know, the solar field is now being constructed. And they're putting in the poles along Route Two and Mail Road. And then Stanley Tree is, is in there too, because they're working under the same contract. They're clearing the path for these new taller poles.
Are they charging us for the use of their vehicles?
Wes Gumwich, they charge the contract and not the town.
They can reimburse like we do.
Correct, yes.
No, we, we, I can make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve of mutual traffic safety detailed assistance agreement with the towns of North Kingston, West Greenwich, Richmond, South Kingston, East Greenwich, and Hopington.
Foster, Gloucester, and Gloucester. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Item D, Emergency Management Director, request to approve incremental payments to hazard mitigation plan consultant from emergency management liability account. You're up.
Good evening, town council president, president and council members. Yes, we earlier this summer entered into agreement with West Greenwich to get a grant from FEMA for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for to update our, well, to actually create a multi-hazard, multi-community hazard mitigation plan. So, that recently, that grant has been awarded just recently, and so, part of the agreement said that the consultant, once you hire, will only get paid once the plan is approved, FEMA approved, and that's an eighteen-month process. So, talking with our partner, Wes Greenwich, they, he suggested that perhaps we could do incremental payments. So, I've, I've talked to our treasurer, and she has said that there is a...
So, over the years, there, when we've done certain E M A pods and participation activities, the town has been paid, but we didn't have really any expenses to apply that, that payment to. So, we, we created a liability account. And the, the idea was if there was ever an emergency type of a situation where we needed some funding, there was a little bit, a pot of money that we could draw from before FEMA could have kicked in, even if it kicked in at all, or... And so, there's about sixty-nine thousand dollars in that account.
And that's a perfect amount, it turns out, since it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, nine percent is FEMA's cost, ten percent is West Greenwich's, Exeter's cost, which is split five percent, so, and that five percent is in cash. So, to pay, it turns out to be a seventy-five thousand dollar split between the two towns, you would withhold the last payment upon approval of a, of an approved FEMA plan, before we would pay that last payment to the consultant. So, I'm here tonight to ask that you approve that incremental pain, an incremental, uh, incremental payment schedule, so that once they do, uh, once the consultant completes a certain, they can be paid, so they don't have to wait eighteen months to be paid for work every day.
I'll make a motion to rec, to approve the incremental payment to hazard mitigation plan consultant from emergency management, from emergency management liability account.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Emergency Management Director acknowledged the receipt of certificate of emergency management.
Yes, I recently was awarded, from the International Association of Emergency Managers, I was recently awarded the certificate of emergency management, which is a rigorous program that emergency managers go through to be recognized with this professional certification.
So, you're now a certified emergency manager, direct, what was it, emergency management director? Emergency manager? Person, anyway, you were certified.
Certified emergency manager, C E M.
There you go.
Thank you.
Okay, next up.
By the way, I, I asked Dory to come and add this to the report of tonight's meeting, so there is a record here of the fact that she accomplished this achievement, and is now certified. So, I wanted that to be part of the record, which is why I asked her, glad to come.
Thanks.
One of her several items tonight, thank you, Dory.
Okay, item F is, Emergency Management Director, request for approval for Wildland Urban Interface Conference and that of payment advance reimbursable by Department of Environmental Management.
So, part of the hazard mitigation plan, one of the risks is wildfire, and to address that, that will be in our plan. We're working part, Exo's working closely with Department of Environmental Management, the Fire Division, and they, they sent out a request to me and others to be, to go to this urban interface conference in order to learn more about local ordinances in the West, because they are used to wildfire and wildfires. So, bringing back those tools and, and different ways that we can look at our ordinances and our zoning to, to help us protect the best wildfire. That's, it's, it's a program, it's a conference that will be reimbursed fully by Department of Environmental Management, but it is reimbursable, so I have to pay in advance and be reimbursed once I return. It's not, uh, I think it was...
What, was it huge amount, I forgot what it was.
I think it was eighteen hundred weather flights and hotels and...
But it's reimbursed, so.
I'm just making sure we're not above five grand.
Oh, yeah, right. Eighteen ninety-two.
Well, I move that we approve the requ, her Dory's request for participating.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, item G, Emergency Management Director, request for approval for ten online certification program reimbursable by Department of Environmental Management, certified wildfire mitigation specialist. That's when you get home, right? That's next.
That is next.
It's in the steps, okay.
So, that's an online program through the National Fire Academy. It's about four hundred dollars to be certified to take the test, and then I will be qualified to in wildfire mitigation, and that's helping me with the mitigation plan and the other efforts that I'm taking on. And again, that's probably reimbursable, uh, it's completely reimbursable by Department of Environmental Management, but payable in the past.
I, I think Dory's trying to be almost as busy as I've been, I'm almost, not quite, not quite, but trying to keep up.
There's a lack of this specialty in the state. There's a lack of this specialty in the state, and we're pushing for people to, to become certified.
You know, Dory has these credentials, when has she built upon them? It also, I'm sure, I don't, I'm sure that's her in a position of able to discuss with other, other entities who she is and what credentials she, she can show for it, so I, I think it's very ambitious of him. Not everybody can take advantage of all these opportunities, and Dory is obviously in a position where she can, so. I, I, I thank you for your initiative, I, I would move that we approve your request to attend the online certification program that should be reimbursed for it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
H, Communication number fourteen, Secretary has made a request to participate in Rhode Island City twenty-ten, two hundred and fiftieth commission of local two-fiftieth committee. Another, another committee we can't fill anybody.
Yeah, but I'm trying to remember, we addressed this last month, or we did?
I asked, we couldn't, we couldn't talk about it because it was communication, we just put it in the business.
So, then we can, all right, well, I'm...
So, then we can directly reach out to the parade committee, is that what you were going to do, or see if they want?
This is the state, this is the state two-fiftieth.
Yeah, but if they wanted to put together a, whatever, since...
Each city and town, he's looking for something to put a committee together.
And since that's already a kind of formed committee that likes to do stuff, and maybe they, we can put it out there for general consumption as well, but
So, ask the parade committee if they would like to participate?
Yeah, be part of it. If they don't, that's great, but if they do, we have built in people that already know how, at least the town works a little bit in how to do things.
I think we were thinking of forwarding it to the historical association.
Yes, them too.
Putting it to a historical association, and, and I would suggest maybe it could be put on the library website too.
Thanks, Bill.
It might just generate interest, some people might say, oh, I don't want to get into political stuff, but, oh, history stuff, you know, sort of celebration stuff, so just put the word out, that's all. Lynn, we won't ask you to coordinate, you know.
So, you want the parade committee and the historical association to be asked whether they want to participate in that, or just put it on the library website?
Yeah.
If we can reach out to the Tamahaw Museum and see if they would like to participate, because they're a big part of Hester's history.
It'd be nice that, if one of these groups, someone might be interested and say, oh, let me try to coordinate, let me, you know, like I said, we won't ask you. But, put the word out, and if there's no interest, then at least we've, we've tried.
Okay.
Should we, just a thought, should we just take this off now, off the agenda?
Yes.
I would say.
All right.
Unless we put it on the, finish and wait and see if there's any success.
Yeah, we'll do that, but we're not...
Well, if the parade committee's not meeting yet.
No, I know, so maybe just hold it for a month or two and see if anybody...
Unfinished business?
Yeah, is that all right with folks, if we just move it there?
That'll work. Okay, thank you, come. Next up, I, rubbish removal license renewal application, ally waste services of Massachusetts L L C, the E B A Republic Services, Jessica Valilia, applicant, one thousand eighty airport road, Fall River, Massachusetts.
So, they didn't get their application in in time from, you know, the November meeting, their license expired November thirty, but we received their application. They operated over the weekend without a license, but they have met all the requirements.
They met all the requirements.
Motion over.
Some more motion?
Yeah.
Second, I think, to her.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, business license renewal application, Duncan Donuts, five sixty-one B, South County Trail, and two sixty, Newsnack Hill Road, Bruce Thomas applicant, seven twenty-nine County Street, Taunton, Massachusetts. Lynn, there must have been thirty emails today over this, but the final status.
So, um, they, again, they too did not give you applications for November one, their licenses expired November thirty. They operated over the weekend without, um, licenses. South County Trail's all set, but Newsnack Hill Road still owes us a sales tax permit, um, which should have been done by them in February. So, she's been trying to get it done today, and now she's asking for one more day, but I had told her this morning that they closed as of tonight, midnight.
Okay. Something doesn't, something doesn't jive here, it's a regular sales tax permit, which is issued by fourteenth of June. No, they expired June thirtieth.
She, um, yeah, she said...
I, I guess my question is, other businesses in town have to meet the same requirement?
Thing is, she's, they're telling her they don't have a sales tax certificate?
Well...
They have, they have the sales tax.
She doesn't know where it is?
She doesn't have it, she doesn't have it.
So, she lost it?
Doesn't have it.
So, they have it. Well, they have, they send sales tax into the state on a monthly basis.
She applied for it, yeah.
So, that, so is, is the issue that sales tax has not been paid?
I don't know. I mean, she said the, I have it somewhere here, she, oh, I know, oh, so, um, this was due honor before February one, twenty twenty-three. And, uh, she said, she said she, um, applied today, you know, trying to get them to send it over today, but, um...
And I know when I was in the office, well, yeah.
When did they, when did they buy this business recently?
A few years ago.
Oh.
But are they the same people?
Yes, yes.
They are, aren't they? So, how can one...
So, what if you, what if you approve one, because the other ones, approve the other one pending?
They should have an active one right now, that is good till June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three, they don't have that.
June twenty-three, three.
This, you mean twenty-four.
That, that, that would be her new one, this is, this is the application for the following year, starting July first. Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. You're right, you're right.
In February, she should, they were...
Backwards, right, Lynn, they don't have a tax number.
That's what she, that's what she said there today.
So, they've been open all year, collecting eight percent sales tax, which the town gets one percent of that of.
A lot of the sales permits do expire, um, before...
What's a year, I think? June thirtieth is the expiration date.
And we have to get the new one, right? So, anyway, I told her, I've told them they can open tomorrow, 401 K deli is closed too, because they never met their requirement.
They closed their store because they failed to do some paperwork?
Yeah, well...
I closed them, I had to, because we had no...
They did, we didn't do it to, to themselves.
Yeah, so they had no licenses until November thirty, so they were closing, they, they were fine, they were good about it, they was like, no, we'll close down, we're sorry. So, they're closing.
We renew ours every year, they always run like two weeks late mailing it, we usually get it the second or third week in July.
Well, yeah, I think.
But this is...
And I let her go over the weekend and...
Six months.
Yeah.
Yeah, they were showing me in the computer how all the other businesses were able to find these, procure them to comply, and these, you know, handful of businesses.
And we explained to Olivia, how they get a letter in October, listing everything they need to bring to us, we need the application by November one. Don't get it, I tell you guys, approved subject two, we call and call and call and call, and finally we get November thirty. There were some, um, three other businesses that were, were closed as, as of midnight, but they got it done.
What just, you should do by February two thousand twenty-four.
When your, your staff, your ladies out there help, help you with making these calls, right?
But I don't believe the town should be chasing down...
No, no, that's a point.
Did I ever saw a car, I chased them.
And I verified the 401, I'll verify tomorrow morning when I drive by to my detail.
I was just gonna ask if, if in fact...
We, I have, they've been keeping me in the loop.
Well, thank you for that, too.
So, Lynn, we need two motions, one to approve one, and one, maybe perhaps to approve the other upon receipt of the sales tax form?
So, you can approve the South County Trail one, they're all set, but the Newsnack Hill Road is still owing, so we can't really approve that, no? And, um, I told them, I'd ask you, and I gave them one more day to stay open.
Well, I'm sorry.
She said that they, I'm sorry, she did say that, um, the Division of Taxation couldn't get the copy to her by the time they closed business, so she thinks she's gonna get it tomorrow, but I don't know.
Well, to Mike's point, uh, it is, when you say that they owe money, you're suggesting they have to pay anything.
This is what it is, you don't know.
You're suggesting they may not have been paying in sales tax for six months.
You don't know.
So, well, but now, to Mike's point, about an approval subject to them providing you, is that a possibility?
That's fine, that's fine.
So that, like it...
I'm sorry, question remains, do they, we close them, or?
Oh, no, I think you do close them, yeah, I think you've been more than, more than trying, but to their, to Mike's point, if they have it by Friday, so...
Well, you didn't know, you gave them the weekend.
I'm, in my mind, I gave them the weekend because they, you have it, you know what I mean, like you're saying?
Yeah.
You're supposed to have it, right? So, in my mind, they had it, they're just not getting it to us.
Yeah.
Then I find out today...
They don't have it.
What was the date that we had, that it was supposed to be in by, November thirty or November one?
No, November one, when you, when you approved these, and then you approved subject two, if they're missing some business.
Other businesses that have been...
And then we spend November calling and calling, calling these people.
Let me just say that this system got approved in recent years, because these vitwling licenses like they have, so they expire at the end of November, so we used to, years ago, approve licenses at the December council meeting, and, and this is B L before then. But, but it became obvious that there was, oh, there were always issues, I mean, we didn't meet till December, I don't know if saying May, it's all council, you may, I don't know if you remember this, but, uh, you'd have businesses that, you know, hadn't really had their licenses renewed until several days into, after they expired, and it may have been Shirley, the predecessor, I think, who may have said, we, we gotta do this differently.
I did.
Did you start it? You, well, see, so many other things, like so many things, brought up to speed here, thank you, thank you. So, you, you began to do this early, just so that we would avoid that glitch?
The lag, the lag.
The glitch, so, people got sloppy, but these are new people, there's no, no excuse for this.
Well, they've had a few years.
Yeah, there's no excuse for this.
They've had a few years.
It's the same thing with, the same people, I mean, yeah, that we deal with, especially even when I go check the legal licenses, it's the same people.
So, that's, that's shutting them down for a period of time, maybe is, is appropriate.
Well, that's the last thing, yeah, it's tough for you.
You gotta learn something.
Did you take the motion to approve?
Not yet, still...
No motion, so, do one at a time, please.
Yes, I will.
Oh, let's see. I'll make a motion to, the Duncan Donuts in South County is all set.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the license for Duncan Donuts, it's five sixty-one B, South County Trail.
Second.
That's, all in favor?
Aye.
That mic is...
We're not even gonna do a motion, two sixty, I'll make a motion that two sixty Newsnack, Duncan Donuts and two sixty Newsnack Hill Road shall remain closed until the applicant produces all the proper paperwork. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, I was working, trying very hard.
I don't even, I don't care.
No.
Thank you.
Not a lot to you anymore.
Understood.
All right, okay, status, Woody Hill and Hall School renovations.
I believe they, uh, well, yeah, contractors finished the time, they need to do them in a day.
Did they clean up the mess?
Could, could we show, uh, for the record of tonight's meeting, what was the, what was the, what was the, do we know what it was, on the end? Well, I just think it's good to have a record of what funds were extended. You remember, Maria, what you sent to Brian?
Yeah, twenty-six thousand.
Twenty-six thousand, amen, okay. That was for the, for the two schools.
Is it valid, is it, did you get to see it?
Well, I, did I get to see it, I got to sat, I got to sit over there, but that's not the point, sorry, it's a school. The people loved, the kids loved going in, there were like a hundred and sixty, uh, Sheila had a clicker, a piece of other clicker, and it got about a hundred and sixty people.
So, we just showed a picture of the kids, some kids, I just saw a picture, I don't know who sent it to us, I don't know, it was online, I don't, kids sitting in front.
Of, over there?
Yeah, I think, yeah, well, like going back to maybe when you were at school.
That was the historical, so.
Oh, you mean, I saw it so...
Baseball, you had baseball?
Oh, a year ago.
I think it was paper, but I'm not sure.
Oh, no, 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 you mean...
They went to the...
Maybe, I don't know, one or two years.
Yeah, yeah, was it, yeah, years ago, yeah.
Recently.
All right, so, is this gonna be removed?
That can come off, we don't do that, we're supposed to, okay. Uh, number ten, unfinished business, use of American Rescue Plan Act, possible acquisition of seven forty-two Ten Mile Road. Is that right?
Executive session to completion? Done it, the executive session, yeah.
Item B, status, July two thousand twenty-two, communication number sixteen, Governor McKeever Island Capital Project Funds Multi-Purpose Community Facilities Matching Grant.
Um, nothing new really to report, just they had, had given us some feedback on some information that they wanted as far as data and, uh, number statistics, so I worked on that and I resubmitted it, um, the beginning of this, this week. So, we're waiting for additional feedback.
Item C, Split Rock Mobile Park, number one, request of electrical inspector to obtain engineer's report and require violation to be corrected timely. I'm gonna loop this with number two, here both at the same time. Trailer park license renewal application, Split Rock Mobile Park, four eighty, South County Trail, twelve one, two thousand twenty-three to eleven thirty, two thousand twenty-four. I believe there is no license there now, correct?
No.
So, there is no, yeah, you're up.
Good evening, I will now call the Gosha Forest Split Rock Corporation. When we were here last month, um, the council agreed to flip this matter over to tonight in anticipation that we would have the electrical lines connected to the new poles that have been installed at the park by this time, and had authorized me to submit a letter in lieu of an appearance tonight, had that been complete, and had your inspectors been advised of that fact. Uh, I'm aware that both your new inspector and your retired inspector, Mr. McGovern, made a visit to the park on Friday. They confirmed that the work, the wires are not affixed to the poles as yet. That the, uh, connections to made, to be made to the individual mobile homes to be serviced by those poles has not yet been done. My client has, in the last four weeks, been repeatedly contacting the pole setters, who are the gentleman who climbed the poles to string the wire between the various poles that have been installed, uh, and to this point, they have not come. He was advised today?
Yesterday.
Yesterday, that the gentleman, who was the head of the crew for them, has been out sick with the flu, and he received assurance from that gentleman that he would be back, and that the, a follow-up call was made today, today?
Yep.
From a different gentleman within that crew, assuring that they would be back, uh, this week. They are not, they have not been back, I regret that I was unable to report to the council if that had not been completed by tonight's date. But this is where we are today.
Those, sorry, let me ask, those, uh, units, they do have electricity, of course, they just, you need to re, have different, that's all. You answered the question.
Okay. Uh, in the interim, uh, my client has been with the electrician, one of the electricians, uh, at the property, and has been making you, perhaps you could explain what he did.
Prepping? Yeah, I'm trying, while I'm waiting less patiently recently, but, um, for the, the lineman to get there, I am working with the, the, the electrician that doesn't climb poles and preparing everything that I can, that he suggests, so that when the linemen get there, they've got... they've got less connections to make, they've got, you know, I'm, I'm just, I just keep working with Mike, waiting for these other guys to, to show up.
Mike the new inspector?
No, uh, Mike is one of the two now master electricians that are working down there.
Our new inspectors, Ken.
Right, and I saw him yesterday, we talked about.
I just wanna go on record to say that I am just very disappointed that this is still not resolved.
I am too, absolutely, you know, I, I don't wanna.
Every month there's an excuse.
It is ridiculous.
Good job, yeah. Can the town find them for non-compliance?
Yeah. Go look at that.
Yeah, because this has been going on since November, it's been going on forever. But this is over a year now. Every month it's something different and.
It's fine per day.
That's, I, I suggest the fine per day, if it's not corrected within forty-five days, shut the park down. It's, you know, it's, this is, every month it's something, an excuse. I was assured last month, everything will be done, poles are in, everything will be strung. We've had good weather.
I can't dispute what you're saying.
Yeah.
Of course, I'm sure you also are saying, can't you try to find somebody else? I mean, I, I understand you're gonna say no, but the point is.
Well, it's his, it's his issue, it's his business, he's gotta get it done, we can't.
Well, I know, but I'm just saying, the person hasn't done the work, I mean, now you say he's been ill, but you must be frustrated.
Absolutely. I have two different electricians now, you know, pulling permits, doing things, um, ninety-five percent of the way there, I want, I wanna be done, I, I, I.
I don't expect you wanna come here every month and go out every day.
Not overly, I mean, God bless you for, for coming here and doing what you do, but no.
You're paying more for this gentleman to come with you all the time than you would pay if you had it done two years ago.
Well, but it's not, it's not, he comes, he's here. I've, I've paid the electricians too to do it. They don't, they don't come. I can't climb the pole, you won't, you know, I'm not an electrician. I don't have the license, I don't have, you know.
Don't climb the pole.
You know, so I'm trying to behave, I'm trying to coerce, I'm trying to pangeol, I'm trying to do everything I can to get it done because I don't want to be here, no.
Another question, please, we have our new electrical inspector, Ken Johnson, and you've spoken with him.
Yeah, yeah.
And he, you've asked him, I'm sure, if he's got any ideas about how to move this along, or does he have?
Well, I didn't ask him if he wants the job, I give it to him, I get a third electrician.
No, well, I mean, maybe he's got ideas about how you can get it done because you've had so much trouble with the people you hired. I don't know, I'm just thinking.
It's a good idea.
Well, I don't know, I needed a plumber, I was, and he came and he was here this morning, now, he doesn't have to climb a pole, but it's different.
That's the thing.
It's, you can't be a lot of people that do that, but. Sorry.
If something ever happened to electric, electrical wise, in the meantime, while we sit on this, you know, all this time, we're all sitting on this.
Over here, over a year now.
And if something happens, there's a reason why it is cool, right?
Right, but it's, it's not like nothing has been done for a whole year, it's been progressing and progressing.
At a snail's pace.
Yeah, similar, some, but, uh.
Well, I wanna make a motion to direct our town solicitor to research and if possible, start finding by date until this is corrected.
Second.
There you go, the discussion. All in favor?
Aye, but.
It's not what we wanna do.
I understand.
Get it done.
I climbed the pole tomorrow.
Climb the pole tomorrow? I don't, don't tell anybody about it.
Meanwhile, with council, meanwhile, we'll continue this another month.
Yep.
Yeah.
May, may I ask the date of the next hearing? Because I'm supposed to be scheduled to be out of town the first weekend.
First Monday of the month.
January second, no, when is it? Second, isn't it, one?
January today.
Tuesday? Didn't we just approve that? Cause the first is on Monday, so we were doing it, I thought the following Monday, but it's not, it's Tuesday. It's the second.
January first, holiday stands well.
See if I'm right.
January second.
Who looked at their paperwork? No, I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding.
Do you want a ribbon?
No.
You're going to start.
And so you're not gonna be here?
I will be out of state until the eleventh of January.
But you can come.
I'll come, but I, I wanna be done, I don't wanna be, yeah, I'll walk in and.
Would you work with Ken Johnson?
Oh, absolutely.
If you are trying and.
No, that'll be done, I, I know, I'm sorry, I've said it before, I know, and it just, you know, it doesn't ring true because I can't get it done, because I can't do it myself, but I just keep doing everything I can to make it simpler for these guys that climb up those poles and move main lines.
Another, another motion in this regard that we asked, asked Lynn to ask Ken Johnson for a report prior to our, our January second meeting, so that we have some report from him. And hopefully, his report can sustain you.
Did we ask him for, did we report, or was that my imagination?
What, no, he did, he did.
Was there a second?
Second.
You had wrong, you know.
Oh, yeah, so do I need to break for it or?
But Ken, but Ken Johnson, I thought Ken.
We asked him, we did ask Ken Johnson recently.
And he did.
Yeah, I told him it was a weekly.
We, we.
Yeah, I did.
We told him right after the meeting.
Yeah.
Oh, I thought I saw, he didn't, he didn't respond.
Yeah, he did, after I reminded him.
Oh, well, that's.
Okay, so we have, we have a motion on the table, we have a second.
Aye.
Okay.
And that was to, that was to continue to January second, that's not correct? Thank you. And my apologies.
Goodbye.
Thank you.
Next is status update, town, extra, extra code, ordinances, chapter fourteen, building regulations article four, impact fees. And January work session. I was just thinking that Bill was talking about some, or you guys were talking about something upstairs, maybe we could do a work session with only those two items.
No, I have a list. Talking about, I have a whole list of.
Well, let's just do as many as we can, and what we can't do, we'll have to have a second session.
Okay, so, alright, we'll do that.
But don't plan to leave early, that's all.
The thing you just said to put on the January agenda about Bill getting consultants and.
Well, that's what I was thinking, maybe do that, do a work session with him with that, or you?
Or not, and not on the January, or both?
I think we should start it in January, we may need to continue while we get it started. And discussing a work session when we need to fine tune whatever it is.
Okay.
About eight or nine days.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you, Phil.
What's that, good night, though?
I'm sorry.
Uh, okay, we'll do that, so, uh, item B.
No date, no, right, you know, it's Saturday. Well, just, a date.
I don't, I don't have a calendar for the, there you go.
For the work session?
Well, yeah, I mean, why don't we pick a night where we know the rooms are open? Which I don't know what the, which pad when we need it.
No, it's the second and third Thursday. Second and third Thursday, no, and the second, no, second.
Jane suggested that the.
Isn't this open Wednesday nights?
The third, the fifteenth, June fifteenth.
Yeah, it's open Wednesday nights too.
So our continued date for January?
Well, it's the King Day.
I know.
Can we read that statement?
For the work session.
Monday.
Anyway, that's amongst the King Day, but we can't.
Fifteenth is a holiday?
It says Monday.
Okay, I don't know.
Olivia, you have that calendar, what's the, the alternate date for January?
January eighth.
Oh, yeah, I saw that.
Which is the following, Monday.
So we're supposed to have the, that was great, like, is it the first time we did that, did we have here?
We can do it then.
Yeah, Monday the eighth.
Okay.
So the eighth?
Yep.
I just think, I'm sorry to throw this in, but I thought we should.
So we have a meeting on the eighth?
No, one week before we leave.
We have a meeting on the eighth, it's gonna be here, and it's gonna be at, usually our work sessions are at six, are we gonna leave at six or seven?
Two p.m. I live at six, what's best.
Six fifteen, six.
Six?
Meeting at six.
So six P M?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Monday, January eighth.
Got it.
Or we can eat after.
Well, not this session, we.
Work session, okay. And that has to discuss the impact, right?
Yeah, impact and other day.
You're gonna have to, what they're doing, we're gonna keep it simple.
She said she's got.
No.
I'll put the other things on and then guys do what you do.
I think we should, and then we'll know what we didn't address. We'll, we'll realize we, if we didn't address, then we'll need to come back.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
I've done that many times.
Put them on, they can get them, don't say, get ahead of me, right?
Okay, item B, Director of Public Works, request for guidance incident five west U. We did discuss that with that.
We did.
We made that and all that.
We hope that there's a, you know, because the, the people can't turn, we've all driven up there to see it, and the trucks can't turn around. And with the snowplow, see, the plowing wasn't an issue, didn't they do it until the spring? I, I know that because I spoke to this little lady on Saturday at some point, she's probably spoken to her too. It's a new season of plowing and everything else, right?
Okay, item F, extra town clerk's office, building six seventy, ten, six seventy-five ten line road, roof and basement issues, can you add a?
I got Brian down to agree that he can do it for under the five thousand, just a small section, right?
Then they're working on pricing the other stuff he said?
Um, he's gonna come down and take a look, but the rest of it is gonna be a lot more. I think it's smarter to do that, you find where the, you start ripping that up, and then you find more problems, but that's what we've come up on with. Then, and Brian picked it back, so he goes, there, no way it's gonna find it, but.
Well, there's been discussion with Lynn about leaks and, oh, no, Brian's been here to look at.
Yeah, we've.
Yeah, I showed him.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's like phase one.
If we were in a bid or something, they would start at this time of year, or?
Oh, yeah, maybe you can't do it.
If he's gonna, we gotta get three quarts, right?
Not, if he's gonna do under the five thousand, we get three quarts, which we can get that, pretty simple. You don't have to wait a month and then another month to go up a bit. So at least we can get that piece started.
Okay.
Hopefully, it's warm enough.
Is there some, some schematic, something so that two other people could go, I mean, what? Or you just show them what the issue is and say, how can you fix it?
Well, the issue is, what he was bringing up, if he pulls the shingles up, the sheeting underneath is bad, it's gonna end to cost, so.
That's not my question, it's just that the issue would be, somebody would come here during the day, contact Lynn or someone, show where the leaks are. Say, what do you wanna do, what can you do?
Down to the next roof.
What's that now?
The top roof, the big roof.
Yeah.
The high roof.
Right.
Down just over plain as all, so all that flashing around here. And see, this was the, that the house really was. And then, then we can go, look at the rest, look at the rest, but this side's not leaking right now, right?
Nothing's leaking because we have that foam stuck in that, on ridge vent.
That's not leaking, it's probably made from the.
If we dig, no, we. But we have the downstairs, it still leaks, right?
And ridge vents are supposed to be, supposed to be.
I don't know, so, I couldn't figure out where the, where the leak was coming from. The D P W went up in the eaves and then checked it out, and then went up in the attic, checked it out, they couldn't find it where it was originating from, and we filled the ridge vent with that foam.
And then stopped.
And it stopped it, so I don't know, Mike.
It's improperly installed ridge vent.
I don't think you have no ventilation in the attic, so it's a concern.
No, it's not, so then the walls.
The other question I have, not to prolong, but into Lynn's support here about the building. Uh, there are this, this company would, I see the ads all the time on TV, you see them, for doing basement water sealing thing, stuff. And I just keep thinking that, isn't that worth, I mean, things gotta be sealed here, we're not leaving here alone. And there's, there's a mess, right Lynn, most often, so that company, do you know, until you see the ads on TV.
Is it leaking this wall all over here or?
Whatever it is.
Not now, it has been.
Just have some.
Yeah, can we do that?
Well, it's, if they can come in and under, oh, it has to be phoned, but it's, I don't know.
Just email this.
But I just think that some company like that, I'd be fascinated to see what, I mean, I, I know in the beach house, I had once, you know, subject to great discussion here monthly, the beach house that I know had leaking issues and.
Is that where the treasury working, the fish for that?
Someone might be on some, anyway, the point is that, um, that stuff stops if you haven't done right. Maybe there are other issues, it's not us, or, I just wish you could do it, I think you should, when you can.
I was, Rob was supposed to go down there, take a peek at the last one, I'll ask him now.
Well, yeah, alright.
Or like Cal said, Lynn can get a basement person in here just to give the two cents.
Let's get a basement professional. What they do, that's what they focus on.
She hasn't got time between now and the holiday, at least. Put it on a ticket.
Are we gonna do that, where they get a basement expert?
Okay, it's your, it's your, when you can, Lynn, make some calls, like, if you have someone.
And all your free time.
Yeah, because I know you have, but, but I'm just thinking that it should be addressed. Cause I've waited a long time.
Or there's no communication, so, executive session.
Can we make a motion, can we make, can we make a motion to, to move, um, B to the last thing?
Okay.
Executive session twelve B, move to the end. Cause I, I gotta, I gotta.
We can do it first.
We choose myself.
Well, he's gotta leave for, he's gotta leave for B.
Well, I can just go outside, okay.
I don't know where he is.
I can go outside.
Alright, what are we doing, are we gonna move it?
No, I just want to.
We have no communications, I'm gonna make a motion for a five-minute recess before we go into the next session. Say, okay, all in favor? You do that?
No, he's gonna go outside.
We're doing five minutes, Lynn is waiting.
Yes, she is.
You're up, you wanna give a mark?
I can't, Lynn, though, doesn't, you just have to rearrange it for tomorrow for lunch.
I don't wanna be here.
You can leave the chairs, leave the chairs.
Sorry.
Tables, tables, we both.